What's your kid's name? Do you remember?
Jack.
I did see that piece on Jonathan Chen. Pretty impressive, really. Yeah, really. Yeah, Mrs. Studd.
I think Chen did like 14.
Mm-hmm, yeah, yeah. And it's 4:30. We're ready. All righty, it is 4:30. It is still June 6, 2023. If we could have a little quieter, we could get today's business going. Call order, the meeting of the Carmel City Council. Boy, I gotta watch that. Carmel City Council. Nova, could we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Councilmember Barron?
Here.
Councilmember Dramov?
Here.
Councilmember Furleto?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Richards?
Here.
Mayor Potter?
Yeah.
All are present.
Councilmember Richards, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Mr. Mr. Martin? Yeah. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, which stands one nation, in the name of our republic. We are the great king of this world.
Temple. All righty, well, first order of business is public comment. Just an opportunity for any member of the public to comment on an item that is not on tonight's agenda. It's kind of a cluttered agenda, so I'll be surprised if there's a whole lot of people wanting to talk tonight, but let's give it a try. There's a three-minute limitation on the testimony. If you'd state your name for the record, I'd appreciate it. Is there anybody wishing to speak tonight? Anybody in the house? Anybody in Zoom world?
Yes, the phone number ending in 258.
258, public comment, period.
Yeah, hi, Mayor Potter. Hello, Mayor Potter.
Yes. Could you get your name?
I'm Michael Walter, Racine X, two north of 11th. And city council members, how are you?
Good.
I came across, thank you, I came across an article that was titled, "Scientists Warn of Potential Serious Health Effects of 5G." It's interesting because this was written in Scientific American, and it has the date of September 11th, 2017. So this is almost six years ago. It's interesting. It's written by 240 scientists from 37 countries. It says, "We, the undersigned, recommend a moratorium on the rollout of the fifth-generation 5G for telecommunications. Still potential health hazards. People and the environment have been investigated fully." Goes on to say that 5G technology is only effective over short distance. It's poorly transmitted through solid material. Any new antennas will be required, and full-scale implementation will result in antennas every 10 to 12 houses. It says that with the ever-more extensive use of wireless technologies, no one can avoid being exposed to the radio frequency radiation. And then it goes on to say that 220 scientists from more than 40 countries have expressed their serious concern regarding the ubiquitous and increasing exposure to electromagnetic frequency generated by electric and wireless devices already before the additional 5G rollout. They go on to talk about the effect of the increased exposure to radio frequency radiation being increased cancer risk, cellular risk, increase in harmful free radicals, genetic damages, structural and functional changes of the reproductive system, learning and memory deficit, neurological disorders, and negative impacts on general well-being in people. Damage goes well beyond the human race. There is growing evidence of harmful effects in both plants and animals. So what I'd like to recommend that we do as we gear up for the rollout, of the eventual rollout, I know there's going to be more meetings and discussion about it, but we need to put this conversation about Verizon wanting to put 5G in our one-square-mile village on hold until we have more scientific evidence that's based in what the harmful effects are for the people that live in close proximity to it. And as I said the last time I spoke, up to 30% of our population has electromagnetic frequency sensitivity, and we want to protect all those folks. So that's it for today. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. Is there anybody else wishing to speak today under public comment?
I don't see any hands raised on Zoom.
Looks like Neil Cruz is attempting to make his way up here. Public comment.
He's doing a little public comment, right? Sorry, guys, I got in late. I just want to address three of our council members. Mayor David Potter, councilperson Alessandra Dramov, and our Bobby Vice Mayor. All of you guys voted for expressing support for actions to further Local Democracy Resolution 2023-048 in the last meeting. I just want to thank you, the three of you, from the bottom of my heart for coming out and saying, "That's why we're here," is to represent the residents of the city, and you honored that sign there. Thank you very much. That's all.
Thank you, Neil. Appreciate that. All righty, I don't see anybody else coming forward under public comment. Is there anybody else wishing to speak tonight? All right, then we'll move on to extraordinary.
Oh, we have two people on Zoom now.
Oh, okay. Who do we have?
Shirley Moon.
Surely, the floor is yours.
Hi. I would like to thank each of the council members for the hours of preparation that they must do to offer valuable guidance on the complex issues that come before you. I would also like to thank those of you who have the courage to speak your truth rather than fall into the group-think pattern. While consensus is the feel-good moment, it often does not serve the process of coming to thoughtful decisions as well as a thorough discussion from many points of view. I am concerned that with so very many significant issues being deliberated at this time, the public is not able to keep up or give issues the attention deserved and are therefore unable to give you the feedback you are requesting. Issues such as Design Traditions 1.5, mandated ADUs, the mandated housing element, the PACT project, the extraordinary city budget. Not only is it difficult to stay current with all these issues being considered, but there does not seem to be any discussion of how all of these issues interface and impact all the other issues and decisions. Not having this broader discussion is a serious omission. I am wondering if there is any room for a pause so that this in-depth discussion can happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Shirley. Is there anybody else?
Phone number ending in 941.
941, the floor is yours.
Hi, Mayor Potter and city council members. This is Kristi Hollenbeck. I agree with what Shirley Moon just said. I feel the same way. I'm very impressed that you were all able to read 773 pages on the Agenda Packet today, but I just feel perplexed as to why we're trying to do so many things so quickly. I'm sure that this is overwhelming for all of you, and it's certainly overwhelming for the residents who are trying to keep up with all of this. I would like to request that we slow down and give people a chance to actually read and digest information so that we can make wise and informed decisions. And also, when it comes to the design review board, it could be a good idea if it's comprised of residents who really care about preserving the history, character, and charm of our village. And thank you so much. Thank you for your service.
Thank you for your comments. I appreciate it. Is there anybody else tonight? There's one woman in the back. We have a woman in the back. Do come forward.
I'm the woman in the back, Carol Hall. Thank you. I just want to, very briefly, because it's going to be a very long meeting, I have the feeling, reiterate, they took the words right out of my mouth, both Shirley Moon and Kristi Hollenbeck. Absolutely, this agenda is a killer, must be a killer for you, having to read hundreds of pages. I just don't know how you can keep up with it all, and we certainly can't keep up with it all. So I ask, can we slow down a little? Some of these issues are years-long, and it's wonderful that we're tackling them, but let's not do it all at once. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Is there anybody else wishing to speak tonight? Nova?
There are no hands raised on Zoom.
All right, then I will officially close the public comment period and move on then to extraordinary businesses. Today, we're celebrating Jude Pride Month, and I think we have a proclamation that I've signed. Jeff, would you like to read it?
We do, thank you. This is the fifth year it's been my privilege to read the council's LGBTQ Pride Month proclamation. I don't even, I remember, you know, when I think about all of the words I've spoken up here over the course of now, starting my fifth year, I remember very distinctly all four of the previous sets of comments that I've made. And one thing I would say is that I hope that, you know, in this community that I will talk about as being diverse and welcoming, that we see maybe a few more of these proclamations, you know, sponsored by other council members or community members in the future. I think that would be great. So proclamation of the city council of the city of Carmel by the Sea recognizing June 2023 as LGBTQ Pride Month. Whereas many cities across the United States recognize June as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer Pride Month, as June has become a symbolic month during which the LGBTQ community and its allies come together to remember the Stonewall riots of 1969 and to celebrate the progress that has been made and will be made for LGBTQ rights. And whereas the city of Carmel by the Sea has a diverse lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer community and is committed to celebrating and supporting visibility, dignity, and equality for all people in the community. And whereas the city of Carmel by the Sea has a long and proud history of celebrating diversity, promoting inclusion, and defending civil rights. And whereas continued discrimination against LGBTQ persons makes it important for cities to stand up and show solidarity and support for LGBTQ residents and those in the community at large. And whereas in the days it is most important to be kind and to show respect to all of our community members, now therefore be it proclaimed that I, Dave Potter, mayor of the city of Carmel by the Sea, on behalf of the city council and the citizens of Carmel, hereby proclaim June 2023 as LGBTQ Pride Month. Thank you, Dave.
Thank you, Jeff. Appreciate it. Well said. All righty, the next item is which would normally be a Carmel High School report out. I don't think we have Jack present, do we? It appears to be tardy.
I don't think Jack Norman, yeah. Jack Norman, we'll have to give him a failing grade for this one, Mayor. But he is on summer break, so I guess we can give him a little forgiveness.
All right, well, we can skip that. Maybe save a little time here. Then we move on then to announcements. City of Minister?
Yeah, just, yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a reminder that last night we did publish our sixth-cycle housing element draft. So it is on the front page of the city's website, in the big box, big blue box. So a lot of chapters to go through. Most of the meat of our housing element is in the appendices. And so we reviewed that, the ad hoc committee made up of councilmember Furleto and Mayor Pro Tem Richards yesterday with Mr. Swanson and Ms. Waffle and Ms. Wallace from our team. So that is available, and then we're going to have a joint meeting of the Planning Commission and City Council next Thursday, the 15th, in Carpenter Hall at 5:30, 5:30 to 7:30, and that'll be to receive the presentation. So this draft is out for a 30-day public review. Please come, and you don't have to read it beforehand, believe me. Ask questions, listen to the presentation, and then maybe you can focus any questions or comments that you have prior to us having a city council meeting on July 11th prior to sending it off to the state for their review, HCD. So that's my announcement, Mr. Mayor. Public meeting, joint Planning Commission council meeting next Thursday, the 15th, at Carpenter Hall at 5:30 PM, sir.
Excellent, thank you. City Attorney, anything to report?
Yes, we had two closed sessions yesterday afternoon. One was a conference with labor negotiators. The other was a public employee performance evaluation of the city administrator, and there is no reportable action from either of those closed sessions.
Thank you, councilor. Councilmembers, anything to report?
Yes.
Karen?
Just to add to what Chip said, this is a very lengthy document for our meeting, our housing element. I started reading it myself yesterday when it came out last night. And I hope you will read it to educate yourselves about some of the reasons why it is what it is, why the state is concerned about housing and so on, because it really does tell a story in the narratives, not just in the numbers. So I encourage you to make yourself familiar with those things. And please, please, remember, this is a draft comment, period. Marnie spent all weekend working on this, so thanks to Marnie on that. And then I just wanted to mention a couple other things. I'm on the Regen Board. That's our local waste management out at the dump that we don't call the dump. And it's really kind of an exciting challenge to be on that board, but we just approved an agreement for a brand-new pilot program out there. Some of you might have been familiar, a couple years ago, there was an aerobic digester that they were using to digest up food waste and so on. Well, that pilot project is over, and this new one is called BioChar. And BioChar is a way of heating up wood products and other things. Doesn't burn them, so there's no noxious fumes or smoke or anything. But it creates a product which is then available to put on agricultural fields, so which will actually enrich them and help with water tension. So once that gets up and running, they'll probably be doing some tours of that. And I wanted to remind you that there are tours of Regen, and it's pretty interesting. And Last Chance Mercantile is out there as well. You can pick up some things. But they've also started doing some, it's called lid flips. And you know, all of you who are faithfully recycling all of your food scraps into your green waste can, they're starting to do some lid flips in the trash cans and so on to see if there's contamination. And this is so that the cities can get an idea if they need to get busy. And Carmel did actually pretty well. We only had about a total 6.82% contamination rate. And this is important because, starting in January, if you have contamination in your cans, you can receive a fine or they can take away your service. So let's all get with the program and do it the right way. And that's my little lesson for today on that one. And then just a brief mention that at Ambeg last month, they talked about the REAP program. The REAP program follows right along with our housing element, and this is a series of grants that will be given to each city and county to help them implement some of their RENA things. And ours is not large. I think it's about $18,000, but we only have 1% of the housing that will be part of the three counties. So we will be getting a little bit of implementation money from that. So I just wanted to report on that. And you know, all of our council serves on other boards and so on, and I would suggest that maybe you would be interested in hearing from other board members about where they serve regionally. So that's just a little hint.
Thank you, Karen, for that subtle hint. Is there anybody else wishing to comment today?
I just would like to remind everybody that Culinary Week is in full swing. I've been to a couple of the events, and they were fantastic. I recommend trying to hit any of them. And I'd also like to congratulate Carmel High Padre baseball team that won CCS last couple weeks ago. And the good news is that seven out of the nine starters are going to be back next year. And also Jonathan Chen, who took 14th at the state championships for golf. Congratulations.
Yeah.
Bobby, I'd just like to add on too, that as somebody who's always enjoyed a good party, I did like the kickoff of Culinary Week on Friday. That was excellent. Also, the Surf About Contest on Saturday and Sunday was great. I would say the water temperature was about the same as the air temp, though. Pretty cold. With that noted, why don't we move on then to the consent calendar? There's 10 items on the consent calendar. I do believe there's one member of the public wanting to pull item number eight to speak to. Am I correct on that? Is this just for a comment? This is the resolution confirming councilmember's appointments to the litter abatement task force, Coast Walk California Trail Association, and the Tor House Foundation.
Yes, yes, Mayor Potter, council members, staff, members of the public. My name is Elliot Rockowitz-Roberts. It's my good fortune to serve as president of the Robinson Jeffers Tor House Foundation, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit whose mission is to preserve and maintain Tor House and Hawk Tower and their collections, to promote the literary legacy of poet Robinson Jeffers, and to serve as a cultural resource to the community. And I'm here today just to let you know how pleased we are that the city council will be appointing Jeff Barron to our Board of Directors. Many years ago, when the foundation was formed in 1978, its first chore was to raise money to buy the property, which was being threatened by development. The city of Carmel contributed 10% of the cost and also then got the right to appoint a council member to our Board of Trustees. For many years, Barbara Livingston served on our board and created a wonderful relationship between the city and between Tor House Foundation. So we're very, very pleased that councilmember Barron will be joining us, and we just wanted to express our appreciation and to thank you all for the upcoming resolution which will come up. So thank you very much.
Elliot, thank you for your good work. To appreciate your comments. I'd just also like to note that there is a slight typo in item number eight where it says that I'm going to be on the litter abatement task force. Ask Alessandra Dramov to volunteer to be on that, which I appreciate. So that's, if we note that change, that'll be a part of the action. Okay, is there anybody on the council wishing to pull an item from consent?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull item number 10.
All right. Is there anybody else? Anybody in the public want to pull an item other than the one that was pulled already? Anybody in Zoom? Okay. All right, why don't we go ahead and then we'll move items one through nine, and you could register a vote.
I move that we approve items one through nine on the consent agenda.
A second.
Motion, a second. Is there any other discussion? Seen on, Nova, could we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Barron?
Yes.
Councilmember Dramov?
Yes.
Councilmember Furleto?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Richards?
Yes.
Mayor Potter?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And then Councilmember Dramov, if you'd like to speak to 10 briefly.
Yes, very briefly, thank you. For the same reasons that I expressed at our last meeting. I think that I would rather leave this as an ordinance and not put it in the code. And I also additionally wanted to say that I felt the amount of $60,000 was too high. I'd rather keep it perhaps at something like $45,000 so the council can have a little bit more control over the contracts.
Okay, that noted. Any other comments? Seen on, could we have a roll call? Oh, no, excuse me, we need a motion, a second.
I'll make the motion. We move item 10 on the consent agenda item.
A second. Motion, a second. Any other discussion? Seen on, Nova, roll call, please.
Councilmember Barron?
Yes.
Councilmember Dramov?
No.
Councilmember Furleto?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Richards?
Yes.
Mayor Potter?
Aye.
Motion carries, 41.
All righty, that moves us on then to item number 11, which is the standing situation with the lease of the Scout House. Bob, are you going to do that? Did you want to preface this?
Yes, Your Honor.
Okay, good afternoon, Mayor, and members of the city council. This is regarding the Scout House. There's two resolutions and sequel findings before you today. I'm not going to revisit, or not going to review exactly what was said at the first public hearing on April the 4th, but I'll just kind of recap and summarize it here. So on April 4th, the first public hearing, I provided an overview of the request for proposal, the requirements that the proposers would have to provide to us, the selection criteria. We talked about the renovation challenges. I talked about activities programming, what we're anticipating the proposers to recommend to us. Discussed facility maintenance and facility management. We had a draft operations and maintenance agreement and a site lease that would be required for the selected contractor to enter into. We talked about a process for leasing the property subject to the Surplus Lands Act. And we had two resolutions. I'll talk more about that at the end of this presentation. But at that public hearing, after public comments, council expressed concerns about the complexity of the proposal requirements. And yes, it is a complicated RFP, but it's a complicated project. Directed staff to proceed with issuing the RFP and to proceed with the mandatory pre-proposal meeting at open house, which we did, to return back in June, and that's why I'm back today, and provide comments on what was discussed at the open house and any other comments we received from the potential candidates. And at that council meeting, the resolutions were not yet adopted. The RFP was released the next Monday, on the 10th. Okay, so then on April 25th, we had the pre-proposal meeting, the open house. About eight or nine attendees were there from the public, several representatives of the Scouts, a couple of contractors, an architect, the city staff. We clarified at the meeting that the renovation cost would be considered to reduce the required fair market rent. That was unclear in the original staff report. There was a bunch of technical questions, a lot to do with ADA access. There was questions about the available plans, what height of the ceiling, what's the height of the building, things that we could not yet answer. Okay? So it was a lot of technical questions, again, predominantly focused on ADA access. But the key comment we heard at the pre-proposal meeting was, hey, there's not enough time to get this. This is a pretty complicated RFP proposal to prepare. So they just needed more time. And it was required that they put all their questions in writing by the May 5th deadline, which they did. So we did receive written comments, responded on May the 12th. A couple of things that point out, and that's also in your packet. We offered three more opportunities for anyone interested party to enter the facility for any additional inspections. We extended the timeline for them to submit additional questions to us until June 23rd. We extended the proposal deadline by seven weeks from May 23rd to July the 11th to give them plenty of time to get their proposal done. We denied allowing the proposers to present their potential ideas to commissions. We need to see a proposal first and then go in that more logical sequence of events. The city stated that we could waive no-cost administrative permit fees. Let me clarify that. If we have to hire a historic preservation specialist out of our pocket, then the contractor would have to reimburse us. But if it's strictly administrative fees that we administer in-house, that's something we could consider waiving. But we would not be providing a loan. Was our question about can we loan funds? We also provided the original building plans that we have, that are not in good quality, but they're the best we have. We provided a termite report and the surveying map that we have. Your packet before you tonight includes the April 4th staff report, the presentation slides. There's a link in the packet to the RFP, which includes the operation and maintenance agreement and site lease, and the RFP, all the RFP questions and responses. So tonight is really, before you is the two resolutions to consider. The first one is Resolution 2023-040. Per Government Code, Section 52201, the city may lease property to create an economic opportunity. That's what we're doing. The public hearing, the first, and this hearings were notified, official public notice in the Pinecone. And should council approve this resolution, it would be at a public hearing, which is, the second one is tonight. Adoption of a Surplus Lands Act resolution would be Resolution 2023-042. We believe that this project is exempt because the city will continue to use the facility. And the adopted resolution will be submitted to the California Housing and Community Development for confirmation that the Scout House is indeed exempt surplus property. Both of the resolutions were slightly modified from the April meeting in that it mentions that this was heard at the April 4th, first public hearing. The council discussed this and gave direction to staff to issue the RFP and to come back at this meeting with any comments. With that, we're recommending that after a setback down and we have a public hearing, a public comments, the council adopt that both resolutions, again, the first one is authorizing the city administrator to issue the RFP, seeking the proposals, and that we would be entering into an operations and maintenance agreement and site lease for the renovation and subsequent activities programming and operations and maintenance of the Scout House. And to adopt the second resolution, 042, declaring the Scout House real property, exempt surplus land. surplus land. Also, that you'd be finding that these actions do not constitute a project, as defined by CEQA, or that, and that we are also exempt from CEQA pursuant to CEQA guideline section 15061B3 and 15301. Happy to answer any questions. We have Joan Cox with Brian Birick's office on Zoom, I believe, to help answer any of the Surplus Lands Act type of questions.
The questions to Bob, council members at this time. Now, Bob, I'm just curious where the contractors to pay fair market rate rent, how is that going to be determined, what the fair market rent is?
How do you determine the fair market rent?
Yeah, because the building doesn't seem to be rentable in my mind right now.
Right.
Condemnable, perhaps, but not rentable.
I'd like to turn it over to Joan, but obviously, we're talking about once it's renovated, because the fair market rent now is very, very low.
Question then to Joan, is Joan, is there flexibility in this when the person comes forward, is the RFP responder, can they come forward and say, I'm going to go ahead and put my sweat equity in here, I'm going to go ahead and fix the place up, do I get a credit for that?
Yes, absolutely. And I think that was made clear at the site visit and pre-proposal meeting, as well as in the responses to the RFP questions. So, and obviously, the value of the building will be on a sliding scale, as you made mention. Right now, it's worth very little, but once the renovations are completed, it will be worth more.
Yeah, I just want to make sure the public.
And there are opportunities in the RFP to offset the cost, so they can utilize the building for other purposes to generate revenue to offset the cost of the rent.
Exactly. Thank you, Joan. Is there any other questions? Are there any in the public wishing to respond to the same right now? Richard Kreitman.
Richard Kreitman, Mayor, Council, City and Community. On behalf of the Silicon Valley Monterey Bay Council, I wish to report a decision taken at the May 22nd board meeting as reported to me, and that is, they will not be pursuing the Scout House RFP any further at this time. As put forth in the questions and comments by S V M B C submitted after the April 23rd walkthrough, that's appendix five attached to this item, there are simply too many unknowns, too many unanswered questions before we, or anyone else, I'd assume, could respond responsibly to this RFP. Again, if you have someone else who's willing to take it on at these terms, that would be excellent news. I'd be happy. I doubt it, but we'll see. Because if you don't, and we don't start again with a different approach, that gem of a building and one's treasured community asset is probably going to remain closed for another couple of decades, which would be a shame. An alternative approach I would propose is to set up an ad hoc committee of the council to look into the new issues that need to be resolved and the questions that need to be answered before the project can proceed, and also forming a Scout House Foundation on the model of the Sunset Center Foundation, as noted in our responses from the walkthrough. And let me say, even though the council is out, I'm in. I want to see this happen. So, I will work on this with you. But before these steps are taken, it is necessary that you, the five members of the council, decide if reopening the Scout House is a goal you seriously wish to pursue. If you do, then the city is going to have to put some skin in the game, besides the valuable staff time and attorney fees already spent on the RFP. And finally, a couple of comments on the RFP. I assume we have to play out the process right now, now that we're into it. But as far as scouting is concerned, there is no reason to approach any motion regarding extending deadlines on this item. Second, a great deal of emphasis has been played on the requirement for either volunteer or prevailing wage or labor if the city contributes any resources to the project. Well, for one, much of the city's contribution could come before any project formally begins. And two, it's not that big a deal. Local wages for high-quality contractors aren't that much less than prevailing wage, and we would have a lot of volunteer wage. And just, I believe that the RFP process was premature before these questions were answered. Thank you very much, and if you have any questions for me, I'd be willing to answer them.
Thank you, Richard. Appreciate your testimony. Is there anybody else wishing to speak to this item tonight? Anybody in Zoom world?
There's no hands raised on Zoom.
All right, see no one else, I'll bring it back to council for direction, consideration of comments, questions?
Well, started. Just two items, last time I said this, and I will repeat it again, I really do think that the process is very onerous, and it's going to be very difficult for us to find anyone to take us up on it. And I know this is a very difficult decision, but we may, as a council, need to decide whether we want to sell this building.
Well said. I think that's kind of the sympathy here in general, that it's a very difficult project, a very difficult building to do anything with. Richard, I appreciate your testimony, very factual, very passionate, but not as emotional as normal. It's good. All right, so is there anybody else wishing to comment?
I have a question.
Sure.
Bob, do you expect, do you expect other applicants besides the scouts?
There is a potential for one additional. It's unconfirmed, but there could be one proposal. With Mr. Kreitman.
I couldn't hear you, Bob.
I was saying that if Mr. Kreitman decides not to propose, there may be one other proposal. It's unconfirmed, but there has been someone that expressed interest, that did attend the mandatory meeting.
Do we have anything to lose? I guess, thank you. I guess my question would be, do we have anything to lose by, you know, we've done the paperwork, you know, we've got one potential, was, you know, we might get one application that might be worthwhile.
Joan, I see you nodding your head up and down.
I am nodding my head, thank you. I'm nodding my head because if you intend to do anything with this property, it's worthwhile making the Surplus Lands Act resolution and getting that through the Department of Community Housing and Development so that you are, so that whatever you choose to do in the future, you retain that flexibility. So, I would encourage you to go ahead and start that process.
Thank you, Joan, I appreciate that.
I have a question.
Yes.
Joan, this is a question for you. If we would decide not to lease but to sell, can you explain the surplus land, please?
Yes, so, a similar requirement would apply. If you are, it would depend on the purpose of your sale. Every sale or lease of land that takes place under the Surplus Lands Act requires these procedures. So, if you are selling for an economic purpose, the reason that it is exempt surplus land for this particular lease is that you're leasing it for an economic purpose. So, there's a separate procedure that you would have to go through if you decided to sell the land. You still have to abide by the Surplus Lands Act, and that entails a right of first refusal that requires you to offer surplus land for sale or lease to affordable home developers and certain other entities before selling.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so, do we want to go ahead and issue the RFP and go ahead and see if anybody responds? Seems to me that's a much responsible thing to do. So, I'd support a motion to that effect. And also to the Surplus Lands Act, a question.
Well, there's actually three recommendations, Mayor. You could move them all collectively, if you want, just move the recommended action.
Just to be clear, that is what gives us the most flexibility in the future. I'll make a motion if you move it forward.
You going to read it?
I'll second it.
So, are you moving then all three recommended actions?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll make a motion in a second. Is there any other discussion? Nova, can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Barron?
Yes.
Councilmember Dramov?
Yes.
Councilmember Furleto?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Richards?
Yes.
Mayor Potter?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Right, next item in order of businesses, Resolution 2023-063, authorizing city administrator to executive professional service agreement with Hammond Playley Architects for the preparation of a functional program, report several drives for the police building, when only continuing not to exceed $300,000. Fred, are you not putting, you're going to be Bob?
I'm Fred.
Fred, yeah, Fred's going to be Bob.
I'll impersonate Bob.
Okay, that's going to be good. Can't wait.
While we're calling up the slides, it's a short slide deck. Our purpose tonight is really to move forward with the decisions you made at your February meeting to actually issue the request for proposal and implement the guidance from the ad hoc committee that you appointed in terms of reviewing the scope of the proposal and then actually reviewing the results of the proposal process. The firm of Hammond Playley Architects had the winning proposal. Mr. Hammond is actually on his way to receive an architectural honor, so he's going to be with us before he goes to the train to head for this conference where he's getting the honor. So, he can come in remotely if we have any questions for him. But the history, I'm not going to go through the history in detail, other than to jump right to the end, which is, on February 7th, you said, issue an RFP. We drafted the RFP, coordinated it with the ad hoc committee, issued the RFP. We had a mandatory site visit. Seven firms came. We actually received four proposals. You may recall this slide or a portion of this slide. This slide used to have three slides. The third slide was the electrical system, and after looking at it, the city administrator said, we can't wait. This needs to be taken care of and taken care of now. So, that's why the panel itself is not on there, but there will still be other electrical work associated with the project. And it's really a project to help you define what you really want to do in a somewhat logical way, in terms of sort of stepping through it. Now, as we were looking for firms to propose on this, you made it very, very clear that while we have many, many good architects, you really were interested in a firm that had great background in the actual remodel of police buildings. So, that was a pretty important criteria. The firm that was selected has great experience in both remodels, as well as in the design of new facilities, because you have an underlying question gnawing at you, is what's the level of investment that needs to be made in this building before you say, we really ought to just start over with a new building? So, we will sort of work through these decision points during this process of examining the building, its conditions and the requirements that we need to have in place to meet, I'll call it acceptable standards, for a police operation in that building. I should also say that the building is a shared building. Public Works is also in that building. Their area, to be truthful, is just as dilapidated as the police portion of the building. It also shares many of the same critical infrastructure. The electrical system takes care of both. The heating-ventilating system takes care of both. So, while the focus is going to be on the police and police standards, we can't help but look at other things in the building to examine, you know, is this safe? Is this not safe? Does this meet code and so on? So, the evaluation committee was made up of the city administrator, the police chief, community development director, the public works director, and myself. We were almost totally unanimous on our first pick. The chief was a dissenter, but it was a dissenter only because he wanted a schedule that was a little quicker, so we negotiated in part on the schedule. So, we bring it to you as a unanimous recommendation for this, for this firm and their proposal. As I mentioned, we looked at the four proposals, and the way we did it is the way the law requires it. We looked at the proposals, their prices were in separate sealed envelopes. We looked at the proposals and said, which is the best proposal? And I purposely asked for a sealed envelope, because as hard as you may try, if you know there's a number out there, it does impact on you, except when you're having brain surgery. In brain surgery, you're not going to go with the low bid, you're going to be going with the most qualified. So, we're sort of using the same technique here. We're going to go with the most qualified, and then we'll negotiate the price. In this particular case, after finding our best proposal, we opened his fee proposal and so on, and we negotiated a fee that we think is fair and reasonable for the amount of work that we are asking them to do. Because of the unknowns associated with this building, we have a somewhat higher contingency fee than the normal. Normally, you might have 10, maybe 15%. This one is about 18%. Just to round it up to $300,000 would be the total appropriation. That's not automatically spent, it really is based on what do we find, because you never know what you're going to find when you open up the wall of an old building like this, particularly one with the maintenance history that this one has. As I mentioned previously, this is really to help you make decisions. It's in two phases, and we're only asking you to appropriate funding for the first phase, which is really to define the problem and define the costs associated with remedying those problems. So, we have four tasks in this first phase. The second phase, we anticipate we would stay with this firm, assuming great performance through this, but it is not part of this award. It's just there, just so you know that there would be a follow-on phase. So, our first task is using his multidisciplinary team, working with city staff, go through the building and examine what needs to be done to the building to make it an acceptable, I'll call it an acceptable, building to be occupied by city staff and the public. Because as you saw from your own walkthroughs, there's a lot of things that need to be done, starting with a whole new roof and so on. But we need to look at it seismically, handicap access, current codes, and so on. So, the first step is, what do we need to do? Because this building's going to stay in the city inventory, so what do you need to do to make it functional as a city public building? The next task starts honing in on where we started, with what do you need to do to meet the minimum standards of a police department, of an operational police department? And that, again, was one of the criteria. We wanted a firm that had background and understanding, what are the requirements of posts, the police office standards and training, and what are the requirements of the International Police Chiefs Association? Both minimum requirements, and I will call it standards requirements. So, a minimum requirement, well, the roof is, needs to be fixed, who's ever there, but a minimum requirement for the police, I would think, is you need an interview room that's not your lobby, an interview room that records the conversations and so on. You need a standalone heating-ventilating system for your evidence room, are some examples. There's not a whole lot, but those are some examples. In your tour, you saw some of the things that I would call would be good standards. You don't have to have a firing range, but you do, and that's great. It's, that's a real asset. You do have to have locker rooms, but the locker rooms you have are pretty decrepit for male and female. So, we would be looking at what would be the cost to make these an acceptable workplace to help you with your, not only attraction, but your retention of the qualified force that you have. So, that's that second level. Police must have, and police nice to have. Now, through these phases, we'll be looking at what are the concepts for dealing with those improvements? And what are the costs of each of those improvements? So, you're seeing both what needs to be done and a budget-level estimate. And then, when we get to the end of all of that, we'll have a total and say, well, here's what needs to be done. Like, right now, would we really think about, we're going to remodel the police side, and we're going to have this stark line in the bay where public work starts? You know, we're going to paint it on one side and not paint it on the other side? Probably not. So, we will, we need to come back with rational recommendations on how to give you a finished building, because when you cut the ribbon, you want celebration, not criticism. Now, at each phase, at each end of these tasks, we will consult with the ad hoc committee to make sure we are staying in concert and consistent with the sense of the council as represented by the ad hoc committee. But of course, if there's really important stuff, the ad hoc committee might say, you know, we really need to go back to the city council and touch base on this midway. That may be why we have to have a contingency. That may be why we have to have a contingency. So our schedule is about six months. That obviously becomes a function of, do we have to schedule any other unplanned meetings? Because everybody is very busy, but that's what our target. So the recommendation would be to approve the resolution, approving the PSA, the professional service agreement, that has the budget, the schedule, the team members, and so on. Now, there is always a question of, is this going to have representation of, I'll call it, the standards of the village? And it will. Mary Ann Chick Chance's firm is one of the subconsultants, and she will not be, I'll call it, designing a building, because we're not really designing any buildings right now, but she will be able to provide input in terms of what are the really important things to the village as we're going through the design and review process. Do you have any questions?
Any questions, Fred?
Yes, sir.
Unfortunately, I think I might know the answer to this, but was there any information that is usable from the previous studies?
Yes, sir. They have, we have given the firm the previous bid documents. You had a design. You may recall, your first project really wasn't a police remodel as much as it was a handicap access project. So they have that, and that will be available then for reuse. We'll need to check, it's kind of old, so does it still meet codes and so on? But yes, sir, we will use as much as we can. For instance, the structural folks will go so far back of looking at the original drawings that they have, rather brown, rather old, but they have the original drawings and say, "Okay, this was originally designed to have a building supported by the plaza." Well, is that still the case? We'll be looking, has the structural integrity been in any way impeded by the leaks over the years? It doesn't appear to be, but we'll look at that. Does it meet the seismic codes for a public safety building? If not, what would it need to be upgraded? So, yes, sir, there's not only the ancient stuff of 1967 design, but there's the stuff that Mr. Cassavan did that you actually put out there.
Great, that's good news. Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, ma'am.
I do have a question. Okay. So because of this phased thing, we get through phase one, will there be an opportunity to say, "This is too far gone? We need to go to a whole new building?"
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, that's what we would like to get to you at the end of task four. You will be, we're going to have a, I'll call it a preliminary design, and that's where Mr. Chick Chance would probably come in, a preliminary design. It's obviously site nonspecific, because we don't know at this time where that might be. It's conceivable, it could be on-site between Public Works and the current police department on the plaza, if the plaza could handle that structurally. But it will give you an order of magnitude cost of what would a new facility cost you, and how long would it take to find a place to build it and bond it and all of that. But it gives you some baseline data, so you can make that decision. Is this a sales year? That's still going to be a sales year when we get through with it? Or is this going to be a good investment? So that was really the essence of where your ad hoc committee was coming from, I think, was to make sure that the investments were wise, long-term investments, as opposed to a Band-Aid that still ended up with a building that was not going to be very usable for very long.
So at the end of this, at that turning point, we'll call it, that opportunity point, we would know more. If we did decide to abandon and go somewhere else, we would know a little bit more about what it would take to make that building usable for another purpose.
Yes, ma'am. And you'll also need to remember that, starting, I'll call it, for a new building, just think about where you're going to put it, and how much is it going to cost in that process. So the police department is going to be in that building or something, you know, fill-in, like in temporary structures, for a good period of time while you're going through here. So what is it we really need to do to this building to make it functional for at least a few more years? For instance, you may get to the end and say, "Well, this thing is so far gone. We'll make sure we do what is safe and what is minimal function, but we're not going to do some of these nice-to-do things, like the locker rooms, because we're going to build all-new for a police station." And so those are the, we hope to have the data that you could make those as informed decisions as best you can.
Okay. And my last question, this would also include the emergency operations center that's in the basement?
Yes, ma'am. That's really a good question. I think that the city probably is going to want to decide, what exactly do you want in the way of an emergency center? I mean, to be truthful, your city isn't large enough to even staff a full-up emergency operations center. I know a previous chief thought, "Well, maybe we could join forces in an EOC with one of our surrounding cities or the county." So those are options that the chief is going to have to think about and decide. You've got other, I'll call it, combinations and permutation of things in the emergency management business that you also have to make policy decisions on in terms of how you're going to handle emergencies in the future. This does not include a significant investment in what I will call extended resilience. I mean, you have, you currently have a generator and a tank of fuel, but we don't know that that's going to be what you really need long-term. I mean, many communities are going to microgrid, so they can operate off the grid, at least with their critical infrastructure, police, fire, and your public safety type, public works type functions, that you need in the worst of times. Those are the ones that have to be able to operate. So some cities, City of Gonzales, is in the process right now of installing a municipal, they created their own municipal utility, and they are installing a municipal microgrid to essentially allow them to drop off the PG&E grid if necessary. There are other places that are starting to do that, as we realize more and more the fragility of the PG&E and other, not just PG&E, the critical infrastructure, as we realize, I'll call it, the peer, near-peer, and even wannabe adversaries of this country. I mean, the city of Dallas lost all of their IT system a week ago. The city of Atlanta was a victim of a hack. The airport in Atlanta, also a victim of an attack. City of Oldsmobile, Florida's water system was taken over by a cyber attack. So we're seeing more and more of these attacks that you need to be thinking about long-term. But I felt, if we tried to fold that into this right now, it just complicates. You know, if you were deciding to build something new elsewhere, don't bother a long-term emergency system for this one building. We can do that at a later time.
Thank you for your answers.
I have a quick question as well. I'm concerned that there wasn't public input in the selection of the local architect. I find that very important, and I'd actually like to see something like a residents committee decide the local architect, because this will be a design, whether it's the remodel or a brand-new building, that we're going to have to look at for generations to come. And I think the residents really want a stake in that process.
I think if you get to the point that you're actually designing a new facility, I mean, a true new facility, you would not, you would want to start over again in the process, because that's going to be a very expensive process. We're not talking a couple of million for a new building. We're talking tens of millions of dollars. So when you get to that point, you would probably want to start over and have it be much more community-based. This was really much more kind of a maintenance and repair project, and how do we make sure the team has a feel for the unique needs of the village? Because the design for this work will be exactly what this council wants the design to be, for example. I don't anticipate you're going to see any real architectural design coming out of this building.
So I'm just confused that why a local architect has already been chosen, then? Because you're not going to be able to change them down the road?
Well, not in this contract you would not. Normally, an architect that is not from the local area will ask for somebody to team with them to bring a knowledge of the processes and so on. In this particular case, we had one architect that I had invited to propose because of their long history, and their response was, "This is such a small, trivial project, we couldn't afford the overhead to take this on from Phoenix." Another one from Southern California said, "Not sure that we want to take that." They ended up making a proposal. Another firm did have a local architect, a different local architect. But in the proposal process, you normally hire the firm that you want, and in this particular case, the firm had to have experience with police remodels. That's a touch zone. One of the firms had proposed, even though I told her right up front, great firm, but they didn't have any experience doing it. They could have hired somebody, they didn't offer anybody as part of their team. In this particular case, the firm, Hammond Playley, is the firm with the police remodel experience, and they have picked a team of structural, civil, electrical, and so on, and architectural, that sort of put their team together as the best team. So as we looked at it, we looked at it from a team perspective. Are they meeting all the requirements of the proposal? Where the number-one criteria was the experience with the police remodel. So that's how this one sort of floated to the top for us.
Okay. I'm not having a problem with the main firm. I still think that the residents need to be involved with the local.
Keep it to questions, okay? I think you made a question, and I think you've got an answer. So is there any other questions? Okay, Fred, I'm curious, is this timeline?
May I approach you, sir? I told the mayor, I don't have my hearing.
I'm sorry. So Fred, what I'm concerned is, so this gets us to the end of this year, right? January, maybe, worst case scenario, January of this year, next year, for the final completion of this phase. Then we get to phase two, that goes on for another year? Because you've got, there's this timeline attached here that's very, it's probably the smallest font I could possibly find, but I was able to get a magnifying glass and actually read some of it. Looks to me like it doesn't even get to construction until mid of 2026, yeah, 24, 25. And we start construction in '25, maybe.
Sir, if I told you I had a responsible schedule, not knowing what you're going to want to actually build, yeah, I really couldn't do it. Basically, they have put in a, I'll call it, a period of performance, not knowing what exactly it is you want to, what you're going to want to do, or how long it's going to take for the community to decide. For instance, if you decide that the remodel is a very expensive process, you could very well say, "We want to get community input on this scope before we go any further." So basically, it's a placeholder. Once we know exactly what you want at the end of the first phase, we would then renegotiate the contract in the period of performance appropriately, because we also don't have any cost.
So the only given, then, is the fact that we know that we'll get this by December of 2023 or January?
That's our goal, yes, sir.
My question, okay. Any other questions? All right, is there anybody in the public wishing to speak to this item? In the room proper, before we go out to Zoom? Last call. No, you got anybody in the public?
There's no one with their hands raised in Zoom. Now we do. Janice Bradner?
I just want to thank the city for moving forward with this project. It's something that really affects the residents, as well as the officers, and it's a tremendous step forward. But I do echo Alessandra's comments about the fact that we would have perhaps liked a little bit more input on the local architects, but thank you, thank you again.
Thank you, Janice. Is there anybody else wishing to speak tonight?
I see Mr. Hammond's there, if he wants to enter the fray. I think I see he even has his hand up.
Hammond, welcome.
Yes, well, thank you very much, and we are extremely pleased to be, you know, to have the honor of working in Carmel by the Sea. And if you have any particular questions of me, I would be very pleased to answer the questions.
I don't see anybody. Any council members have specific questions of Mr. Hammond? Appreciate you making yourself available. I will stay tuned, there may be questions later. So we'll bring back the council in for direction. My concern is that we stay within the $252,000 allocated here. I understand the contingency, I think that's important, but I do think that the architectural issues that have been brought up are certainly conceptual. I mean, it's not, we're not going to far dry or anything, we're off a fine line with the designing at this point. That's in the massive phase two, which concerns me. My concern is about the amount of time that this is taking, not to get to the point where we're going to go ahead and have the phase one done, but the phase two is certainly going to be significant.
Yes, sir.
So, yeah, I understand the inability to go ahead and forecast exactly what it's going to be, but still, it's going to be a concern of mine as we go forward.
I share your concerns, Mr. Mayor, especially about the time and the fact that this is drawn out, and this is so essential that we get moving on this, and now it's going to take even longer and longer to get it done.
All right, so council, do we have a direction?
Yes, I have. Yes, thank you. So I would like to, as a member of this committee, I would like to thank staff, Chip and everyone else for all the work that you guys put in bringing this to fruition, and I would like to make a motion to adopt resolution 2023-63.
I'll second Jeff. As a member of the commission, I'd like to thank you for your work on the ad hoc, too. It's been rather intense, but I think it's very important that we have the public input we've had to date, and I look forward to more in the future. We'll motion, we have a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Barron?
Yes.
Councilmember Jermell?
Yes.
Councilmember Furleto?
Yes.
Mayor Protime Richard?
Yes.
Mayor Potter?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. All right, this gentleman moves on to the green waste recovery increase, a fee increase of 3.171 increase from charges for the city's franchise, all are green waste.
Mary, I'm really happy to.
Mary, welcome.
Yeah, just for everyone's benefit, and thank you, welcome. Well, thank you for joining our team, Mary, for the second time. Mary and I worked together back in the planning department bullpen 25 years ago, and she was, she's our newest, one of our newest employees, joined us, what, two weeks ago, three weeks ago?
Just about three.
Yeah, and so she's worked for a long time in urban planning, land use planning, environmental programs, and she's our environmental programs manager. Thank you. And so she'll be, she inherited this project two weeks ago, and we do have representatives, I think she'll note, from both Regen and from Green Waste Recovery today. So, welcome again, Mary, and she'll do the presentation, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Chip, and good evening, good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. Tonight before you is a resolution to approve a 3.71 rate increase for the solid waste collection, recycling, and organics collection by Green Waste Recovery, and also a memorandum of understanding with Regen Monterey that would become effective on July 1st of this year.
Mary, just get right on top of that microphone, so it picks you out.
Is that better? Yes. Okay. So a little bit on the background is, Green Waste Recovery was selected in June of 2014 for a 15-year term that ends in June of 2030, and the franchise agreement allows for a rate increase, an annual rate increase. The rate adjustment includes the cost of disposal and processing, which is referred to as the tipping fees at Regen Monterey, which was formerly the Monterey Regional Waste Management District facility that's in Marina. This also includes inflationary adjustments to Green Waste Recovery's labor and operating costs, and as well as the cost of the city's 13% franchise fee and other regulatory fees. The rate adjustment is a 3.71 collection rate increase. It's primarily due to labor and material inflationary costs for this period. The Green Waste Recovery originally had estimated the rate increase for this year to be 3.97, and after it was reviewed by HF&amp;H, the consultant, they had reduced the number to what is now proposed before you, the 3.71 increase. Last year, the council had approved a 2.14% rate increase, but it was followed, which had followed a previous rate increase of 3.76%, that was in December of 2021. So this year, you're seeing 3.71% rate increase, and for a residential 32-gallon container, that is, last, this year, it's been $50.05, and it's going up to $51.99. that is orig, last, this year, it's been $50.05, and it's going up to $51.91. Part of the cost includes SB 1383, and over the past year, the city has been providing organics collection services to all the residents as well as the businesses. We've established an edible food recovery program that all residences and businesses are part of, and we've been conducting outreach and education. We were at the Earth Day, Arbor Day events and providing bins at those events. And also, we've set up a SB 1383 waiver program. And next year, and as Councilmember Furleto had mentioned, that in the beginning of January, they, in 2024, they will be taking action against non-compliant entities. So in part of the 1383 implementation, we have an MOU that is for an update to the regional implementation costs. And the cost for Carmel is $9,486, which is an amount that's included in the Public Works budget. And city staff has also been coordinating with Green Waste Recovery on implementation locally. We're doing outreach and also implementing the waiver system. The waiver system that is currently in place, there's two different types of waivers. One of them is a de minimis waiver, and the other one is fiscal space waiver. Currently, we have received, the de minimis waiver is for businesses like banks and retail that don't have a whole lot of organic waste. And so we've received 61 applications to date, and we've approved 56 of them. The other one is physical space, and that's basically limiting, when they have limited space where they can't even hold a container or, or don't have it there. And so we've received 16 applications, and 11 of those have been approved so far. We wanted to just remind everybody, for the commercial entities that feel like they are qualified to apply for a waiver, that you can do so through the Public Works Department, and there's an online application. So our recommendation tonight is to adopt the resolution for a 3.71 increase, as well as the amendment to the memorandum of understanding between Regen Monterey and the member agencies for the fiscal year 2023, 2024. I'm available to answer questions, and we also have Emily Hansen from HFNH, who's here, who can help answer any questions for the rate increase. And we also have Kristin O'Hara from Regen Monterey, who's available via Zoom for any questions regarding the MOU.
Thank you, Mary, appreciate it. Is there anybody with questions from council at the moment? Bobby?
I don't, I'm not sure if you're the person that can answer this, or maybe Green Waste. But since 2014, how much have we seen our, our waste go up, our increase, over the past, whatever, seven years?
Right, so we have, we did ask HFNH that question, and they said that it has gone up 51.69% since the.
So 50, 51%, I don't know, how many years?
Since it started in 2015.
So are we looking, do you think that this will go up again, another 50%? So in 10 years, we'll recognize 100% increase in green waste?
I think we could probably ask our consultant that's online, what they're expecting for the rate increases.
Great, okay. Can we ask them?
She's on it, too.
Emily?
Can everybody see me?
I can see you.
All right. Mayor Potter, members of the council, you guys have, a couple of you are familiar with me in my previous capacity as an employee of Green Waste Recovery. And I have moved on, and I'm now working for HFNH. So I wanted to give you a little bit more context on that 50%. I know that that was mentioned in the pine cone, and definitely wanted to provide some context for that. So when Green Waste Recovery began providing services, and under their initial proposal, when the Monterey Regional Waste Management District, which is now, of course, Regen, went out to competitive procurement, there was some uncertainties in the data that was provided as part of that RFP. And so for the first couple of years of the agreement, the first five years of the agreement, actually, the normal protocol for Green Waste Recovery to adjust their rates on an annual basis was followed. And that was the process that Mary explained to you tonight, which has to do with looking at employment and fuel and CPI increases, as well as tonnage and rates at the district's facilities. So for the first five years of the agreement, that process was deployed. Starting in, I believe it was right around 2018, 2019, the member agencies that are part of the Peninsula City Seven Member Agency contingent that all uses Green Waste Recovery called for what's a, what's called a cost-based rate adjustment. And that was a process that was triggered, that Carmel requested be done, along with the other six agencies. And through that process, there was a matching of the actual cost to provide service and the rates being charged to the residents and businesses within Carmel by the Sea. At that time, once all of that data was dug into, it was a very comprehensive process, Green Waste Recovery provided all of their routing data, labor data, hours, productivity statistics, et cetera. And it was determined at that time that for the first five years of the agreement, city of Carmel by the Sea had actually been undercharged pretty substantially. So what you saw in the rate adjustment that occurred in 2020, that was really that large bump, that 42.09% rate increase, that happened in 2020. However, the residents and businesses within Carmel by the Sea for the first five years of the agreement had actually been receiving, you know, effectively a discount of that equivalent. So HFNH performed that cost-based rate adjustment. Those rates were adjusted up that 42.09% so that the residents and businesses within Carmel by the Sea were actually paying the cost of service for the services provided by Green Waste Recovery in Carmel by the Sea. Since that time, there has just been the normal annual adjustment process, which is the prescriptive process, again, that Mary described, has to do with the indices and also the tonnages, the actual tonnages that are collected in Carmel by the Sea. So while we don't have a crystal ball, there are still some opportunities that Carmel by the Sea or that Green Waste Recovery could trigger and request another cost-based rate adjustment be undertaken. But absent that actual request that would be made by the city or by the other member agencies in conjunction with the city, you will just be looking at the normal inflationary index and the tonnages that are collected in Carmel by the Sea as they move through the district's facilities. So hopefully that clarifies that big jump.
Very good.
Thank you. Thanks for the explanation. What do you have? And it seems to be the same thing. What if we voted no? I mean, why, why do we have to vote on this when it seems like you can pretty much charge us whatever you want, and we have to accept it? What if five council members up here said, no, we're not going to accept this?
We'd have a lot of trash.
What, what would happen with that, Emily?
So pursuant to the terms of the agreement, it, the, the way that the franchise agreement was written, it provided for only three opportunities for rate adjustments. Every rate adjustment has to come through the council, and it's vetted in detail by HFNH and also by Regen, who participates in that process on behalf of the seven peninsula cities utilizing green waste. So green waste cannot just come to the city of Carmel by the Sea and willy-nilly ask for a rate adjustment for some extraordinary circumstances that cannot be demonstrated that the cost of service to Carmel by the Sea actually went up. So when there is what's called an extraordinary rate adjustment, if that request were to be made by Green Waste Recovery, then the company would have to demonstrate why those are allowable and legitimate expenses. It would be fully vetted, and then presuming that HFNH was providing review of that, we would make a recommendation on whether the council might entertain adjusting rates upward to accommodate that. The request could also be made if the cost went down, the city of Carmel by the Sea would have the ability to request an evaluation of those rates going down in terms of that extraordinary rate adjustment as well. But in terms of kind of your, your specific question of, hey, why does this have to come to the council if we have to approve it anyway? The reality is, is that in the franchise agreement, and it was very tightly written with vetting by your attorney at the time, as well as the other attorneys in the seven member agencies, the other six member agencies, is that there was a prescriptive process, and it was prescribeded in terms of the formulas so that you didn't get to the end of this franchise agreement and realize that you had been undercharged for so long that by going out to a competitive bid, for example, that the rates had dwarfed CPI, and you would be incurring, for example, a double-digit or a triple-digit even rate adjustment. So the idea behind this prescriptive adjustment is that the costs get fully vetted, and then they just get adjusted annually based on those indices, employment index, fuel index, and the normal just CPI for other expenses. So that happens annually, and then there is that cost-based rate adjustment that did occur. But I think it's important to note also that city of Carmel by the Sea residents did enjoy substantially lower rates. If the data that was available in 2020 had been available in 2014, then the rates coming out the gate for the Green Waste Recovery franchise agreement would have been substantially higher.
All righty, Bobby, you may never get an answer.
Thank you, Emily.
You got to thank it. Is there anybody else on the council who wants to ask a question? Thank you, Peter, so many, appreciate that.
Did you say the green waste person is available?
It is not green waste, but it's Kristin from Regen Monterey. So we don't have anyone from actually green waste here.
Okay, well, perhaps you can follow up and ask green waste. It's my understanding.
I think, I think they're here, Mary. I mean, there's Clark Clovis online, the two gentlemen behind the front row, aren't you gentlemen from green waste? Yeah, there they are. There's three people here from green waste.
Mayor, member of the council, my name is Jim Maresco, I'm representative of Green Waste Recovery. I can answer any questions you might have.
Yes, I have a question. I'm on the Regen Board, and one of the questions that comes up is, in our educational process to teach people to be better recyclers and to do a better job with the green waste, is the need for the stickers that go on the cans. And I would like to know when we can expect to have stickers put on the cans in Carmel, because we don't have them now.
Per, per SB 1383, the requirement for the franchise hauler is any cart that is replaced through the process, the new cart goes out with the stickers. So they, what, what they did is they gave the companies enough time, so what we do is as we replace any cart, any cart has to go out with the new stickers. Until we replace those carts, the stickers aren't required to be put on there because of the fact that you would be talking about sub-companies would have to put 150, 200,000 stickers automatically on the carts. Now, we do have brochures and literature that go out to every, to all the people through our public educational program, and like I said, we're moving along with the stickers as we replace the carts.
Second question is, if we. We had people in Carmel who would put the stickers on, volunteers, could we procure those stickers ahead of this time? Because this could take 10 years for cans to be replaced.
That's correct.
So we could get the stickers from green waste and attach them ourselves?
That's correct. Or, or we could work, work it out with the city and, and work it out with HFNH, and come up with what we figure a cost would be to hire the people to go out and sticker the carts, because you have to clean the carts, top of the carts good, or the stickers will not last.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Good job, somebody who's just drafted, well done. Is there anybody else? All righty, why don't we take it out to the public then? Is there anybody in the public wishing to comment on this item? Anybody in Zoom world wanting to comment on this item?
There's no one with their hands raised.
Bring it back to council for direction. Possible motion.
Well, I'm, I'll move approval, but I would like to just mention that the tipping fee went up by 5%. That's the fee that the waste hauler has to pay to tip it at Regen. And a lot of the costs are fuel, for one thing, and a greater amount of product to handle. SB 1383 is part of greenhouse gas emissions. So we're trying to deal with climate change as well as recycles and so on. So there's lots of reasons behind some of the cost increases, but fuel is a great part of it, and also labor costs.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Oh, I just wanted to add just a quick comment. And I'm sure this has been brought up before in years past, but this is just another example of an unfunded state mandate, SB 1383, that once again is passed on to local residents. So we're bearing the brunt of it.
Exactly. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second.
Yes, I'll second it.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion?
Yes, I would just like to say, you know, everybody, nobody likes to have our costs increase, costs go up, but the city did enter into a franchise agreement with green waste to provide a service. That service, you know, that contract has, has a prescriptive methodology for increasing our rates every year based on the costs that are incurred by green waste on our behalf. And I think we should, the city should live by the contract that we signed, and so I will support this resolution.
Any other discussion? Could we get a roll call? We have a motion, a second.
Councilmember Barron?
Yes.
Councilmember Jarmov?
No.
Councilmember Furleto?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Richards?
No.
Mayor Potter?
Yes.
Motion carries 3-2.
All righty, little statement votes. All righty, why don't we move on, then we'll go try the next one there, just see what we can do if we get through this one without a bio break, that'd be good. Receiver report, private policy direction on potential reestablishment of the design
All right, greetings, Mayor and council. Here to present a conversation about the re, potential reinstatement of the design review board. Quick background, we've been through this before, so I'll go relatively fast. So in 2000, the city did have a design review board that was established. It shifted the design review responsibilities for development projects from the Planning Commission. Land use matters still required PC approval, so things like variances and use permits. In 2009, this body was dissolved, so effectively it ran for about nine years. That recombined those duties with the Planning Commission. There were specific reasons that were cited, this was done through resolution, so we pulled these reasons straight from the resolution. Talked about difficulty in filling both hearing bodies, the impacts to staff workload, supporting two separate bodies, and some consistency issues when you have two different bodies making decisions on the same types of projects. So in roughly 2020 of this year, up until now, there's been a renewed interest in the design review board. A lot of that centered around the design traditions project that we've been working on. There's the desire for an increased emphasis on design review, and it actually became a strategic priority item for this council. So on April 4th, we came to you and we had a meeting. You did affirm your desire to move forward with deliberating the creation of the design review board, and directed us to come back with an overview of the process of how it used to work in the city, and also a quick overview of how it works in the city of Monterey, who has a similar body called the Architectural Review Committee. So this is a quick overview of the Carmel process. It was established in the year 2000 and consisted of five members. There was a preference, it wasn't required for some sort of background in the design-related field, think architecture, landscape design, artists, things like that. But there was no requirement for any of the five members to be that. You did have to be an elector of the city. We have learned in previous meetings that we can no longer require that. You can require someone to be a resident, but you don't, you cannot require them to be an elector. We learned that at a previous meeting, so just keep that in mind. They reviewed design of new construction and major alterations. They were a decision-making body, meaning they were not making a recommendation to another body to make a final decision. Decisions of the design review board were final. They had the same process that the Planning Commission uses right now for design review to conduct two hearings, a preliminary concept hearing and a final details hearing, and their decisions were, of course, appealable directly to the city council. The nuance here was that projects that included land use entitlements, such as use permits and variances, did not go to the design review board, and they were considered by the Planning Commission. So as you could imagine, when a project also had some design elements, and you have the Planning Commission reviewing them, they're going to naturally interpret design guidelines differently than the design review board. Whether or not that's right or wrong, that's just the fact. So that's how it used to work. Decisions requiring other bodies' approval, like Forest and Beach Commission, were required to take place prior to take place prior to the design review board. So if there was a tree removal, that decision had to be made prior to the design review board making a decision on the design. So we'll flip over to our friends over the hill there in Monterey. They have a body that's been established for a long time, and I believe our mayor actually served on this body at one point in his illustrious career. It's called the Architectural Review Committee. It's a longstanding committee, consists of seven members, and there is a requirement for one of those members to have a background in a design-related field. The rest do not have to be required, but it is preferred. The ARC reviews all design-related projects unless it's minor, meaning that it's approved at a staff level, or it's historic. And they are, again, a decision-making body, not advisory, and they also conduct two hearings on each project, but they meet twice per month, whereas the design review board was meeting once per month. These meetings, those decisions, of course, are available to their, appealable to their city council. The nuance and difference between how ours worked and how the ARC works is that the ARC also includes projects with land use entitlements and tree removal. So the planning commission has to render their decision first on just the land use component of a project. So if there's a variance or a use permit, that hearing at the planning commission takes first, takes place first. And then, once that decision is made, then the design component of the entitlement goes to the Architectural Review Committee for final decision. So no design decisions are made until land use is settled. They also don't have a Forest and Beach Commission, so the Architectural Review Committee is also the approving body on tree removal over there. Projects involving historic resources, however, do not go to the ARC at all. They are considered completely by the city's Historic Preservation Committee, which makes sense if you think about it because design and historic resources go hand in hand, whether or not that design is going to negatively impact the historic resource, so that's how they do it in Monterey. So thinking about that, the two ways that it's been done or is currently being done, you now have some policy considerations. And really what we're here today asking you for is that early policy direction because from here we're going to take your direction, and if we decide we're going to continue to pursue a design review board, we'll want to then start going to our planning commission, perhaps, you know, some community outreach, and this could dovetail with the design traditions project, which takes a lot of the same steps to do as this would. So your policy considerations, things like, is would the design review board be an approving body or a recommending body? That's what we talked about earlier with making final decisions or just making a recommendation to another body. How would we divide up the duties between the design review board and the planning commission? You've seen it's been done differently in two different places, we could do it a different way also. Do we want to have specific appointment criteria? Do we want to think about a larger net? We've just recently, in the past few months, expanded the net for our Historic Resources Board, so that may be something we want to think about with the design review board as well. Some more policy considerations, just think about, you know, are there impacts of adding steps to the current development process? Is there a way to smooth those, maybe make it better by adding a design review board? These are all things to think about. Without design review, what do the PC agendas focus on? This would be, you know, a conversation when we get to the planning commission to have with them too, but what would be the main focus of the planning commission? Because a lot of what they do right now is design review just by nature. And how to handle those aspects of development projects that currently require PC approval and will also require PC approval in the future because of what they are, things like variances, use permits, lot line adjustments, things like that. So if the DRB is reestablished, we would have to draft an ordinance and bylaws, update the municipal code, have PC hearings, two meetings at the council, and ultimately amend our local coastal program or LCP through the Coastal Commission. And a big note on here, that's the same path for the design guidelines update. So as I mentioned a little bit earlier, it could be a process that's dovetailed with the design traditions project on its current path. So with that, we're requesting early policy direction on the potential reinstatement of the city's design review board, and I'm available for questions.
Questions, Brandon, by councilmembers? Is there anyone in this room who wants to speak tonight?
In the room itself.
Members of council, Ken White. The Carmel Residents Association voted yesterday to unanimously support the question of the design review committee. I'm going to take you back to the mid-1980s, if it's okay, and I had the pleasure of working on the city council and I was chair of the planning commission when we had what we called a retrue design committee working with us. This was an opportunity for bringing in a couple of people, applicants, that really don't know what the process is. It took the spot of being a counseling committee, five citizens, not sitting up here, five citizens sitting around a table looking at initial presentation of plans and then discussing, discussing with the applicant, the ordinances, design standards, and things that we hold our applicants to and why. And it turned out to be very effective, and in fact, it tended to cut down on the appeals from the planning commission to council. And the reason is because we had a consensus when the application went to the planning commission. The design committee was not the final decision. They made the suggestions and then it went to the planning commission. And the applicant had a much thorough, more thorough understanding of what they were going to be faced with. When an applicant comes in, they've got a pretty good idea of the kind of house they want, they want to look at it a certain way, and that has to be ameliorated sometimes because ordinances don't qualify for that. I think it worked very well because I worked with it for a long time, mid-'80s into the almost, yeah, the year 2000. We lost it in the mid-2000s on a 3-2 vote on the council. And we lost a real opportunity to bring people to understand what we stand for in this city. I would recommend that you suggest, or I would suggest to you, that you combine it, the design review committee, with the historical committee, and then that way they both have a relationship and they are working with the planning department. It also should cut down a little time from planners because a planner would meet with the five people, and the applicant, and the architect. And it tended to work very smoothly. It cuts down on the statements you keep hearing about, it's so difficult to get a permit to do anything in Carmel. It tended to ameliorate that problem and it worked out pretty well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ken. Appreciate your testimony.
Could I ask Ken one question?
Not normally. Let's wait, let's wait until we get all the questions out of the way, okay? Yeah, thank you, Ken. Is there anybody else wishing to speak tonight?
Neil Cruz, mayor and council. So in the Carmel Preservation Association, we like this idea and we're happy to see you supporting it. We feel that there needs to be a concentrated focus on the types of projects that are approved for construction in the village. As you know, we spend forever out there at Farmer's Market, we're hanging out with the locals all the time, and we see about an 80% of this village, the residents, that are not happy with modern-style architecture, okay? So the one question that we always come up with and that concerns us quite a bit is, how do these people get appointed? And if I understand it correctly, they're appointed by the mayor and the vice mayor? Is that the way it is now? So what that means is if the entire city wants something and those two individuals are of a different mind, they could set up these committees in the design review board with what they prefer rather than what the residents prefer. Is there some way that there could be some sort of an exchange between the residents of Carmel and these acting committees, planning commission and design review board, when they feel that they are not responding to the wishes of the community? Because right now, I don't know that there is any such way. So we would, of course, hope that the mayor and the vice mayor would represent the wishes of the residents and that that's the way it would go, but I'm not sure that's always the case. I believe we have a series of planning commissioners that are quite welcome to modern-style architecture, and as I say, about 80% of the community does not seem to be in favor of that. So we have a mismatch right now between our planning commission and the residents. How can, can there be any kind of a governing mechanism, any way of a fail-safe mechanism where the residents can say the design review board is not representing our wishes or the planning commission is not representing our wishes? Other than that, what I wanted to say is that we also, I mean, there's a seven-member committee, which was, which is what the City of Monterey is using, and in a way, I kind of like that because I think it is a very serious matter, the kinds of things that are approved and allowed. And also, we're going to have a lot more development altogether with the housing plan. It seems to me the planning commission is going to have a lot of work to do besides just deciding on the designs of buildings. So I see a good use for it at this time. I think there's going to be a lot more work and a lot more decisions that have to be made, so I think it makes a sense to have this design review board or Architectural View Council or whatever we call it. Thank you.
Thank you, Neil. Is there anybody else wishing to speak?
Counsel, Thomas Hood, architect. Just a couple of quick comments. And looking through the documents, the word diversity of design styles should jump off the page. I think it's kind of pathetic. We're going to hear another argument about bashing architects for only doing modern buildings. This is not the place. I think what Ken White suggested was the way to go. Having chaired a design review board in Marin County for about five years, we had much greater power. If you combine HRB with design review, staff will not be as overloaded. And to me, that's my biggest concern, quite honestly. We have a project going through a process now where a revision to a building permit, it took five months to get to a public hearing. Cost my client a lot of money, and I had three minutes to sell it. Well, I got it. But I'm saying, putting more burden on staff, it would be like the Planner's Permanent Employment Act. They would be working seven days a week just trying to keep up. And my biggest concern is not the objectivity of the planning commission or HRB or ARC, whatever you want to call it. It's how can staff best respond, which to me means a concise document without redundancy and without bias towards any particular architectural style. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Thomas. Appreciate your testimony. Next speaker.
Hi, Eric Dyer, architect, local architect, and member of the Historic Resources Board here. In principle, I think having a design review board on design issues, focusing on design issues, and a planning commission to address land use issues and long-range planning issues makes sense. My issue in this small community is just finding enough qualified candidates for the positions. You know, thankfully, we're fortunate to have a solid planning commission and HRB now, but it does seem difficult to find good people for these bodies, and so adding another discretionary review board seems like a challenge. These boards and commissions are not only, are basically only as good as the members that sit on them. I would argue that also that qualified design professionals, especially architects, are critical to have on these boards. Thanks to this council, I was able to come back on the HRB, but the planning commission still has no architect since Don Goodhue left his position. What architects can provide is a broad and extensive range of experience and education dedicated to planning, building and design, and critically analyzing projects on their potential effects, and not least, really being able to accurately interpret the drawings and documentation provided by the applicants. So a DRB, if it is reestablished, I think a lot of thought has to go into how to expand the pool which candidates can be drawn from, and there may be reason of resistance to go beyond the city limits, but it's something that really needs to be thought hard about. Additionally, I think there's also a danger that establishing a new board would add significantly to the workload of an already extremely busy staff. And if it is created, it would be important to make sure any, you know, the already prolonged process for permitting is not exacerbated. So, thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Appreciate your testimony. Is there anybody else in that room who wants to speak? The lady from the back.
Yes, lady in the back. Thank you, your honor, and staff and council members. I am also for a DRB design review board. At first glance, I like the Monterey one. I like the fact that there might be seven. I don't have any opinion about HRB combined with that other than the advantage of it being harder, less hard on the staff, but I don't know about that. It depends on a number of factors. I think that the planning commission would have lots to do that is not just design review, and that's kind of what they're doing now. I like the idea that it would meet twice a month because then ideally, if they had to, if they had enough business to work, because then people would be less likely to be delayed in their projects, which we do have a problem with at this point in time. I think that it's critical that we have residents represented on that board, and I think that the design guidelines that we're working on now are going to be critical to all of that because if they're good and if people read them, both the people on the committees and the people that are building, then we will be able to resort to those design guidelines for what's acceptable in Carmel. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Is anybody in the room who wants to testify tonight? Zoom, all over.
There's no one with their hands raised in Zoom.
All right, we'll bring it back to council then for deliberation. Karen, you wanted to ask Ken White a question?
Yes, the question I had was if the design review did not have final say and it went to the planning commission, did it also go to Forest and Beach first? So was it three trips minimally?
The Forest and Beach Commission and the day I'm talking about always met and made the recommendations first, then it went to design review. But design review is for the buildings and policemen and a lot, things like that. Did that help?
Yeah, so they went minimally three commissions to get an approval.
Yeah, and it tended to cut down the planner's time because you had a lot of explanation done early.
Thank you.
All right, then we had Neil Cruz had some clarification. He wished, he was thinking under the impression that the mayor and the vice mayor make the recommendation, make the appointment. We don't, we make the recommendation to council. Council approves it as a whole. So there is a process there that does have, you know, a vetting process with a public input opportunity, as we had earlier tonight. So it's fine. Okay, anybody else? All right, so why don't we go ahead and have some discussion here? I personally favor the institution of the design review board. I think it makes a big difference. I did start out there. Years and years ago, I was on the Architectural Review Committee for four years and two years on plan, and then I went over to the dark side and was on council for four years, and then it's been kind of downhill ever since. But I do think that the Monterey model has some value to it. I do like the fact that the decisions are final, that they can be appealable to council. I think it does redo some element of redundancy that we have here. I think it's a good suggestion, so I'd be supportive of the Monterey model, but with the incorporation of some of the aspects of the City of Carmel, for example, the five-member board, the makeup is suggested here where the members would be, members of the public, one member of the public, one member of the Architectural Review Committee world, one member of the building community, one historian, that kind of thing. And I also would support the collapsing of the other department. Any other comments?
You mean the HRB?
The HRB, yes, yeah.
I would agree with the incorporating an "in" with the HRB, and if Brandon says that he can dovetail this in with the design review traditions, I think that would be a really positive move forward, so I would love to see this go forward tonight.
I have a little concern about putting all the design review on the HRB. I mean, that, and we just had a little issue filling out the HRB for one thing and had to expand our sphere of influence. I think part of the problem we have in Carmel with a dwindling population is the fact that we don't have as many people willing to give up that much time. And as far as two meetings a month, I don't know whether there's turnaround time if you don't get a positive review at the first one in two weeks to come back, but...
I don't have burning desire to have it two weeks necessarily, every two weeks, no.
Okay, I just, my concern is just, I guess, it will, will it go to planning commission for their input as far?
for their input as far as how this would work? And would our existing planning commission be able to choose if they wanted to be on one or the other? And I don't know, I just, if this dovetails with the design traditions and we have a good new document with design traditions that new, new commission members can be trained to use, I think that would be a positive thing. I'm not sure that getting another commission going now without the design traditions completely finished is the way we'd want to go because it would be sort of a mixture.
Maybe I should just clarify that, ma'am. I, I'm saying bring HRB and the design review together. I'm not, I'm not suggesting a new commission. I'm suggesting design review become part of HRB.
Okay, but what about our existing planning commission? Would they have a choice to move over to HRB? Or would they stay on planning commission? How would that work?
I can speak to that.
It's under early policy direction anyway, so.
Right, exactly. I mean, whatever, whatever your choice would be, so what, because I was here, and so Mayor McLeod and Mayor Potem Hasdevak actually called the planning commissioners in and asked them, asked them whether they'd like to sit on the DRB. Bill Strid was our first chair of the DRB back in 2000, whatever it was, 2003. So that's the kind of direction we're looking for from you tonight, is how you would see that. And I think what Mr. Richards was suggesting, ma'am, was that the design traditions project with establishment of the DRB would move forward together. So you'd have one application before the coastal commission as soon as we get the design traditions project done.
Oh, I'll make a comment. Sure. I support former Mayor Ken White and his idea to bring it back with an advisory role and making a recommendation to the planning commission. And I would also be open to the idea of joining it with the HRB so we don't have an additional group and more staff time devoted to that.
Jeff?
Thank you. So I have a list of the issues, a couple more that Brandon mentioned. Whether the DRB is an approving body, I agree with, I think, what, what you said, Dave. The, the, the design review board would be an approving body, just like it was in, you know, up until 2009 or 2010 when it was disbanded. I am sort of intrigued by Mr. White, ex-Mayor White's idea of this citizens' body that's sort of apart from the, from the DRB, but it, it sounds like extending out, it sounds like to do that with the addition of the DRB would extend out the approval time a little bit. And I'm, I'm not, I'm not sold on that. I'm not sold on that idea yet. Right now, I think you do, Brandon, if I'm not mistaken, you do these pre-project meetings with the applicants anyway, where, so you sort of do what it sounded to me like some of the work that Ken, Ken described that committee is, is doing. So it'd be great to offload that from you, but on the other hand, I assume you have a sort of standard checklist on what you do with, so I don't, I don't understand, I don't really know how that would work. How to divide the duties between, you know, one of the questions was how to deal with use permits, like things that by law the planning commission has to do. And I think you said in the, in the staff report that the Monterey model was that the planning commission saw variances and whatnot before, before the DRB, before the DRB was the, how many, you know, how many applications that you see require variances? Like what percentage of the applications would fall into that bucket?
Ten to 20%.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not that concerned about making them make the extra trip to the planning commission. I assume that some of them have to go there anyway right now. It sounds like you can approve garages and the setbacks, like that's something that DRB can approve, the planning commission can't, that doesn't have to go to the planning commission, or is that not a variance?
Right now, the, right now, the planning commission has authority over that specifically in the code. It's not called a variance, but for garages and the front setback, it says it requires planning commission approval. So if we wanted to move that.
So right now, so right now, since it's the same body, they get the approval at the same time.
That's correct.
You know, of all the things, you know, that's on this list here in your slide about use permits, I, I think that, the, I think that the variance that you've listed, height and setback in parking and use permits, I think that's all related, that should still go to the planning commission, should still go to an independent body.
Before it goes to the, before it goes to your C, as I do.
Yeah, but garages and the setback and retaining wall height and fences, maybe fences, but fences higher than the limit, that seems more design-related, and I would be okay leaving that stuff to the design review board in conjunction with the documentation that's being produced, that's being produced now. How would the establishment of a DRB impact the number of steps? And we talked about that. You know, Karen brought up the Forest and Beach Commission when she asked Mayor White. I, I honestly think that the DRB should be sort of skilled in dealing with tree issues. I don't know how Councilmember Felito would feel about that. I'm a little bit wary, you know. We talk about, you know, one of the things we talk about in all this housing stuff that we do is the length of time it takes and the complexity of starting and of getting an application through. And so I'm kind of keen with where I think Dave is about sort of reducing the amount of time. And, and a trip to the Forest and Beach Commission could take two or three months, and that's just two or three months that gets added on to the project for, you know, for that, for that one, for, for those trees. And, and I don't know that that's a good use of two or three months. I don't, I don't really have an answer. Karen might speak to that, but my, my colleagues might as well. The DRB appointment criteria, I agree with what Mr. Dyer said. You know, we do need to have professionals on the board. I think we do suffer a little bit by not, you know, as he spoke about being able to interpret plans or whatnot, and I think that is a problem. You know, expanding the sphere of influence, I think that old DRB was allowed to have one member outside of the, outside of the, outside of the community if it was an architect. And, and we might, you might look at what the language was, you might look at what the language was back, back then, because I believe that there was something in there. And I think when my house went up for the DRB, we had one, we had a member that was outside the, outside the city. If most design review shifts away from the planning commission, what do future commission meetings look like? I've said this before, you know, the climate, the climate plan jurisdiction needs to go somewhere. And if most of the, you know, if most of the design review is being taken off of the, off of the planning commission, put into this design review board, the planning commission, I would really like to see that work incorporated into the planning commission's work, into the work. I'm okay with folding the, the HRB into the DRB, just calling it the DR, calling it the DRB, I guess. How's the, how's the current planning commission and DRB to be reconstituted? You spoke of what, I think Chip spoke of what Mayor, Mayor McLeod and Ms. Hasdevak did in, back in 2000 or 2002, and that sounds like a perfectly reasonable plan, perfectly reasonable plan to me, to ask the planning commissioner members and then fill this, ask the planning commissioner members what they would prefer, and then try to fill the remaining presumably five spots. I, I would be a little worried, to be honest, if, I say this to Dave and Bobby, who would be doing these interviews, I'd be a little bit worried if all five of them opted to do exactly the same thing, and we ended up with a commission. So I would rely on your suggestive powers to figure out how to get the five of them to split three to two, so that we don't end up with one entire commission of new people, or figure out some way to ameliorate, ameliorate those effects. And the other thing, you know, that's kind of come up before and that Karen spoke of a few minutes ago was training. And I think that one of the things that we don't, we don't, we do a really terrible job here is of training new commissioners. And I think that there's some language in the code, I think that there's some language in the code for some of the commissions about training, doing training, but maybe as part of this exercise, or as part of the exercise that the design review, the design traditions people are doing, there could be a, a sort of an annual training or an onboarding, certainly an onboarding training for, you know, staff could, staff could give like a four-hour presentation to new commissioners, like that was set in the code or something. So that at least, you know, new people aren't just like thrown into the shark tank and don't really know because it, you know, I, I see we have a new planning commissioner from last year sitting in the audience, and maybe we could talk to her, talk to Erin a little bit later and see what her experience was like. You know, when, when she got sort of tossed in, you know, I remember when I started on Forest and Beach, it's like, okay, here's your seat. And it's not very much fun, and it's a little bit unnerving, and maybe we could make that, maybe we can make that a better experience.
I can promise it was better than that.
For, for new, for new people. And obviously, that goes for all the commissions too, but we should start here since this is, since we're reopening this can of worms. So those are my comments.
I would like to respond about the trees. You know, the trees make up our forest, are part of what the ambiance of Carmel is. And the trees somehow, when it falls to the planning commission, get sort of short shrift sometimes, I think, at the end. And when I was first on Forest and Beach, we saw every application, and perhaps that was a bit onerous for people, but it was an opportunity for a little different look at what it was to come to Carmel and build a house and live here. And it was that opportunity to instill in people that every single lot in Carmel is part of a forest, whether it has trees on it or not. It, it is influenced by the forest. So I would hate for it to fall by the wayside how important the forest is. It would have to be upfront, you know, and part of the whole equation if it were going to not have to go to Forest and Beach. I think now it only goes to Forest and Beach if it's significant trees that, that the forester doesn't make the determination on themselves. It, it really got cut back quite a bit, and that was in the interest of not putting people through too many meetings, but.
Given this, given Karen, given that this is direction, perhaps we can get Karen, Brandon to hear what you're saying, come back with thoughts that address your concerns.
Yes, I would hope so. And I do think that it is important for our planning commission to become a long-range planning. You know, we're always reacting to applications rather than actually doing long-range planning like traffic management, like a downtown master plan, like some of the things that we just don't have the time for because we are reacting all the time to applications. So I see that as a possible positive, yes.
All right. So Brandon, what are you hearing? You get, you get notes here, copious notes?
I've got, yeah, very copious notes, Mr. Mayor. So one of the things I've mentioned in my presentation that I would throw out as a suggestion to all of you, obviously it's up to you, but I think we're near the time where it might be wise to go talk to our planning commission about this and get some feedback from them, but certainly it's up to you. So if you wanted to direct me, the next step I could do is take the really good information I got today, draft those notes up, run them through the planning commission and see, get their feedback on your early policy direction, and then return to you with sort of like a draft idea of what resetting the design review board would look like, a more structured version. I just gave you a high level. I would return with almost like a program in a way, and then let you chop up and give comments on that, and then that would then start the process.
Without compromising the direction you're hearing from us though tonight?
What's that?
Without compromising the direction you're hearing from us tonight.
Without or with?
Without compromising. I mean, we made decisions, we've made, given definitive direction, but we want in to see if it should be refined.
Yeah, I think, I think that would be good. And then, you know, that would, that would sort of be, that would be the presentation to the planning commission, be here's what the city council said is their policy direction, and then, you know, get their feedback, and then return to you with that program constructed and include feedback that I heard at the planning commission.
One thing I would comment on just briefly is that Bobby and I have not had a problem finding applicants for, for commissions and committees. We've had a plethora of, I mean, really, abundance of applicants lately, and we've had a hard time saying no, because we haven't had enough positions.
Extremely qualified.
Unlike some other counties. I was at a League of Cities meeting a couple of months ago, and the South County cities were bemoaning the fact they didn't have anybody coming forward. I said, well, we had 22 applicants a while ago for miscellaneous positions. That was a couple of years, a couple of months ago, but it was still.
And I would say council always gets to vote on whoever the ad hoc committee recommends to a commission, council always votes on them.
I do have one other question. Would you consider also running this by the HRB board for their input?
If directed, we'd be happy to do that.
So I just would comment, you know, it was mentioned I was on the HR, the Architecture Review Committee with the City of Monterey before. So I definitely support Jeff's suggestion that we get some training. I was a rookie there for a while, and I was immediately appointed chair. I had no experience whatsoever, and the issue of contemporary architecture came forward. This woman came up, and she was rather scantily clad and quite attractive. She laid a set of plans out on the table, and it's very good because we're actually at ground level, there's no elevation, there's no talking down to people. They just set up plans out there, I looked, I looked at her, and I said, meaning to ask, make a comment about the architectural design, I said, have you always been built like this? She didn't, she didn't go, it was kind of, kind of a rookie move on my part, but, but I would suggest any, any training we can get would be helpful as far as tack and decorum goes. So Jeff, well thought out, I appreciate that. Okay, we're going to take a bio break. We'll take a 10-minute bio break. We'll be back at, let's say, quarter to seven, and then we will tackle the other items that were before us tonight. Thank you. Thank you. All right. So now it's 6:46, we're under gun here. All right. Why don't we then receive the report on the, um, wait, wait. Design Traditions Group. Provide policy direction and on the potential reestablishment. So, excuse me. Receive an update on the status of Design Traditions 1.5. Brandon? Brandon?
I sent the presentation that I think he went to the facilities, Mayor.
Oh, no, really? Oh, my, yeah. Come on here.
And for the record, it was Councilmember Tice calling me. My phone went off.
Former councilman.
Former councilmember. Pocket... Sure, pocket dialed me.
Brandon, get out of here. Well, I guess we need to start talking. Okay. My God. Brandon, you're out.
Sorry.
You would have thought there was a rock concert going on in the bathrooms with all the lines.
Going to what?
Rock concert.
Oh, yeah.
All right. I apologize, Mr. Mayor and council, for being a little bit late there. So, thank you very much. We're here to, oh, I have the wrong, don't even look at the title slide. So we're receiving an update on the Design Traditions 1.5 project. Let me make sure this is the right, nope, this is the wrong presentation.
Uh-oh. Oh, this background.
Okay. Okay.
And provide council project sponsor with an updated date on. First slide.
Sebastian, I'm sharing my screen, is it working?
Let me make sure it's the right one.
The one that says December.
That sounded either.
This one?
We are off to a great start. Thank you very much. Apologize for that. So we are here to receive, provide an update to you on the Design Traditions 1.5 project. And before I get too far into the presentation, I want to start just by saying thank you. We've been at this project now for 15 months, believe it or not. So well over a year already. So a big thank you to the community, to Norrie Winter, who is not with us this evening. He had planned on joining us, but we're happy to announce that his daughter just went into labor today, so he's going to be a grandpa times two. But he did get called in to grandpa duty and having to watch his grandchild, otherwise he would be here with us. So congratulations to him. But a big thank you to Norrie and his team, to the city staff, and also to our steering committee, who's appointed, four of whom are here, Victoria Beach, Doug Schmitz, Don Goodhue, Marion Chikotans, and Melanie Billig, who's not with us this evening, but certainly wishes she was. So moving on, what we're here for, the city council as the project sponsor, you know, we use that term in project management. The city council really is the one that set us up on this journey those 15 months ago. And so we're coming to you with an update on the accomplishments and deliverables that have happened to date, the current project step that we're working on, upcoming milestones, and proposed revised project schedule. And at the end of this, we'll be looking for any feedback or any questions that we can answer for you. Next slide, please. Clicking the button is not going to do anything. March, so we'll review a quick update here. March 1st is when we set out on this. The contract was approved with Norrie Winter. And in April, the city council appointed our five-member steering committee. And in April 13th, that was their first meeting. Shortly after that, in August, the steering committee started meeting in person with the public. One of the first big milestones we reached in June was our major community workshop at Sunset Center. It was a two-night affair, interactive exercises. Really, the purpose of that was to determine goals and where the project needed to go based on the feedback from the community. With that information in hand, combined with online surveys that we did, additional public emails, input from our steering committee and the planning commission and city council, we moved forward onto the next step. And it's worth noting, too, that while before, during, and after that community meeting, the steering committee continued to meet, they met to talk about getting ready for that community meeting, but also other various topics in and around the Design Traditions. So for that nine-month period there that we're talking about in 2022, for the all of 2022, there was 11 total meetings of the steering committee. So then in September of 2022, we released what we called the Strategy Paper, which was basically a roadmap to how to get to the updates that the community told us they wanted to see. Next slide, please. That Strategy Paper was released, and over a series of about a month and a half, we went through different meetings. We had another community workshop at Sunset Center to discuss that Strategy Paper, but also have some other interactive exercises building on those June workshops. We brought the Strategy Paper to the planning commission and the city council and the steering committee to get feedback on that Strategy Paper, which really, as I said, was the roadmap for what would happen next, which is working on drafting those updated design guidelines. So after we pushed the Strategy Paper for a month and a half or so through all those steps, then we set off on drafting. So for about two and a half, three months, we incorporated the feedback from all of that previous work into the drafts. Next slide, please. And in February, February 9th, actually, the first draft updates were released to the public. The original target, I will say, was December 30th. So we were a little bit over a month late on that. I can take ownership of that. And so February 9th, when the drafts were released, and for about three weeks, it was out in the public, and the steering committee sat with it. And on March 1st and 3rd, we had a couple of meetings with the steering committee to start getting feedback on those drafts. At those first couple of meetings, the steering committee and members of the public expressed concerns that the drafts didn't meet one of the primary goals of being a more user-friendly document. So with that, the steering committee began an effort to reorganize the design guidelines under six established guiding principles. Those guiding principles had been established and agreed upon by everyone months before that. They're really great. They kind of, they lay out exactly what they say, the guiding principles. But the guidelines were reorganized by the steering committee into what we call brevity drafts. So the focus was on the core section of the design guidelines, so not the supplemental information, like the intro to the design guidelines or how to use them, or sense of place, or history of the city, but really that core section that gives you the specific, you know, section 1.5, your window should look like this. That's what they worked on, is reorganizing those underneath those six guiding principles, rather than having a section just on windows. There'd be a section under, you know, the one specific guiding principle. So between March and May, the steering committee with members of the public worked on these brevity drafts. Over a series of about three months, we had eight meetings. This included feedback from those community members that were in attendance at those meetings. As I said, it's mostly reorganization, but as we got farther along, there were some guideline length, guidelines that had language modification. But, you know, it's really just the core section. That is, that effort of the core sections is nearly complete, but it's still not a finished product. So you saw in your packet, we attached the residential version of the brevity draft. We are almost done with the commercial part of that, and that will, then both core sections will be done. So the next task for the steering committee is to determine what supplemental information to incorporate back into and with those brevity drafts. So think about pulling out the design guidelines part of the February 9th draft, reorganizing them, and then trying to figure out what parts of that February 9th draft to put back in with these brevity drafts. Do we insert the introduction and history at the beginning, how to use it? Are we going to use appendices? But that's really the exercise that's been taking place for the last three months, has just been focused on those cores. Next slide, please. So here's some of the remaining milestones, the big ones of the project. And this is all based on the original scope of the Design Traditions project. You can see we need to complete the steering committee review and reorganization of the draft guidelines, complete the draft zoning code amendments. We have done some work on those, but we have not been as focused on those because we've been so involved in the guidelines themselves. We need to, we still need to conduct that third community workshop on the draft design guidelines, present those along with the zoning code amendments to the community, with the planning commission and city council, prepare a revised draft based on all the feedback we receive, and then begin the final action of adoption hearings. Next slide, please. So I'll run through this relatively quickly. As I mentioned, we set off, we had very succinct steps in the scope of work for this project, the Design Traditions 1.5 project. When we adopted the contract with Norrie Winter, we just finished Phase 1, and we are now in Phase 2. So you can see Step 6. The first part of that was to deliver the draft guidelines, and that's been done. And where we're at now is the second part of Step 6, to review those design guidelines with the steering committee. Initially, I'll go back one just for me. So you can see I have up here, we're recommending the date of that being complete TBD. It was originally going to be December, January, in the last version that we showed you. But as I mentioned, the design guideline draft did come out about a month later, so, and we're still working on that. So next slide, please. Step 7, we'll have things like completing the zoning code amendments and walking the steering committee through those zoning code amendments. Step 8. Next one, please. Then we get to our community meeting, which was going to be the February, March timeline. And then after that, we move on to redrafting that draft number 2 after we get that feedback from the community and the planning commission, the city council. And then ultimately, that gets us to Step 11, which is the adoption hearings before the planning commission, city council, and the coastal commission ultimately. So you can see, we still have a ways to go. Go ahead, next slide, please. The original target for adoption, when we saw you in January of 2022, was to have adoption hearings in March of April of this year. Obviously, that has not happened. We came back to you in December of 2022 with a revised target of June 2023, which is this month. We're obviously not going to make that either. At that time, we were made aware that Norrie Winter would not be able to support us past June of this year. He is retiring, closing up his shop. His staff is moving away. He's moving on to another endeavor. So his participation past June of this year is very much in question and almost guaranteed to be almost nothing. So we do have a new anticipated target date just based on what we think has left to be done. We're thinking it's going to be towards the end of this year or early next year, based on the current arc that we're on right now. So with that, I'm open for questions and comments. This truly was meant to be an update of where we're at to make sure we're bringing the city council along for the ride. And I'm available for questions.
Questions of Brandon before we go out for public comment?
Yes, could you back up a couple slides, please, to where it said zoning codes?
Sure. Go ahead, Nova. My clicker doesn't click when it's on her screen, so...
Well, my question is, some of those to be finished yet, are some of those things that you will write, like the zoning codes that go along with these? Like the zoning codes that go along with these design guidelines?
Yes, so that's a great question. So the zoning code amendments, some of them are intended to implement the design changes. So they are very much dovetailed with what's happening in the design guidelines documents. And some of those zoning code amendments are just things that we have been keeping notes at our desk for the last, you know, two and a half years. When I first got here, I asked my staff to keep a piece of paper on their desk that anytime they're working in the zoning code and they see a conflict or a misreference, or a misspelling, or something that doesn't work right, make a note of it, because I knew something like this was coming. So we have a whole hit list of little things. So some of them aren't necessarily design-related. All of the zoning code amendments, though, yes, are done by the city. So that's a city function. Nori was only involved minimally with the zoning code amendments to help us with some figures and some of those design-related ones, which we have been working on with him. We've been working on some of the zoning code stuff while this, the steering committee's been working on the brevity drafts.
So the zoning codes, I just want to be clear, would be more a staff project?
There will be some elements of that that the steering committee will need to weigh in on because they are very much related to the design. But it will be a handful versus all of them. There'll be a lot of zoning code updates, but only a handful of them are directly tied to the design guidelines.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
I've got a question. A couple months ago, when one of the drafts was released, I went through the historic narrative, and I found some changes. They were minor, and I submitted them to you and Catherine Wallace. And I was just wondering when those would get incorporated?
Absolutely. That's a great question. So where we're at in the process, you can think of it that that draft that you made comments on is still being commented on by the steering committee.
Okay.
So we have not pulled together, I haven't even, I haven't had an opportunity to go to the community, the community meeting for their comments yet. So we're still in that phase right there, right after the draft came out, getting comments on the draft guidelines. So we have them. I didn't lose them, I promise. We'll make sure they get incorporated.
Okay.
Yeah, one question. So I have Mr. Winter's scope of services in front of me that the council approved after Karen did, Karen did a really great job of revising it. And when I look at, when I look at these phases in here, phase two, you know, what Nori's tasks are, what Mr. Winter's tasks are, draft text, develop illustrations, draft zoning text changes, draft, execute, draft, develop, blah, blah, blah. But you just told us that Nori is leaving the project this month. So we're only on step six. Who's going to do all of the things in steps seven, eight, nine, 10, and 11?
That will, that will fall to me and my staff to move forward unless we find either a different consultant or the city council wants to go a different. I feel confident in the time that we've spent with Nori to date and the direction we're on right now and the feedback we've gotten from the community that we're not starting from zero. We've got a running start at this. So I feel confident in our ability to do that as a city.
So that, so, you know, the schedule that you have on the, on the, on the screen, you know, it's like a year behind schedule, even behind the last schedule that we talked about.
That's correct.
So that's, that, part of that reason is because of this, or like?
Because there's, all of those steps still need to be completed.
If we, like, if there's money left in Nori's contract, then we took that money and hired someone else to do the work in phases, in phase two, that however much money is left. Could we get months back on our schedule? Or that would just be incorporating another resource? Or how would that?
I don't think, I mean, just shooting from the hip, I don't think you'd pick up months. I think bringing someone in cold to the project might be more work than it's worth.
Okay, thank you.
Be a little bit of a learning curve, I would think. Any other questions? Might open up the public, opportunity for any member of the public to comment on this item?
Girls first. Thank you very much for what you and the city staff do for us. We, it's very definitely appreciated. I'm Nancy Toomey, speaking on behalf of the full CRA board of directors. We'd like to offer the following recommendation. Please consider our endorsement for the continued work of the Design Traditions 1.5 steering committee with an extended but not indefinite timeline for this agenda item. Five of us personally on the CRA board have attended most of the steering committee meetings in person on Zoom or have viewed the videos online after the fact. The passion and commitment of the committee members and all of the public participants is indeed impressive. We especially like to thank the great professionalism of the chair and co-chair of this steering committee and the expanded support by Brandon and his staff. After receiving the February draft, first draft of the design guidelines, which was over 200 pages, the team began to work on coalescing the critical need to focus on streamlining the whole document process, restructured around the degree two principles, as Brandon had mentioned, and worked on reformatting for usability, including links to external documents that are valuable but don't need to be incorporated in the core document itself or the documents itself. They decreased in the redundancies and also removed contradictions found in the original drafts, which were, there were some. This project work has been collaborative and inclusive of those who chose to actively participate. And yes, there have been bumps in the road, but all of the views and the comments of the public and other participants have been welcomed and heard. So I really appreciate the tone that was set along the path of this steering committee. Thanks all for recognizing this work of this village critical project. And we request the council's official support for this volunteer team's continued work and deliverables with Brandon's staff, Brandon himself and his staff. So appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Next speaker.
Good evening, David O'Neill. And I've had the privilege of participating in these design guideline meetings, almost every single one. And it's really because you selected such great people to lead that it's gone so well. It's been a real great pleasure, and everybody's been able to have their voice heard. And I think everybody's been able to come to consensus about most things, which is quite remarkable. Brandon has been a fantastic leader for us and helping us understand what we need to do. The revised design guidelines were, really needed to be slimmed down in order for people like me as a, as a, you know, investor and builder here to be able to find things, for it to be approachable. You know, it would be very difficult to read that other document all the way through. So this is a much more usable document. It's something that I can reference very easily. Of course, I was part of writing it, so, but anyway. You know, it's a really great project. Thank you for putting it together. And I think you'll be really pleased with the product that's coming out of this. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Next speaker. Oh, yes, yes. Come on, Carol. Woman in the back again. Women sit in front of it, take less time and travel.
Lady in the back. I just wanted to reinforce what he said. There's an advantage to waiting until everybody else speaks because they say everything you want to say. And I just want to commend the steering committee. I have been a part of this every meeting, three-hour meetings for what seems like, well, it has been months and months. And this steering committee has worked so hard. And the product that they now have is really very workable if you think 100 pages versus 20 pages. Not that it won't have links and, and other, a few other things added, but it's so much easier to read and understand than, than it was originally where there was so much redundancy, as Nancy said. So they just really deserve credit for all of the hours and hours of work they have put in, especially Victoria. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Eric Dyer, again, local architect and HRB member. Despite having maybe an overly ambitious original schedule, I wanted to say that I feel this process has been very productive so far, and a lot has been achieved. I would simply encourage a bit of patience as part of this process. I think Brandon told me the first design guideline process took over four years. And I would encourage the city, maybe not to take that much time, but to take time to get it done right and not rush the end product. I would also like to say, I think the process has been a healthy one. I don't think you can escape going through a public process like this one and not have some tension and difficulty. But in the, in the end, all these issues from people of different views needed to be aired. I think we've definitely had that. And what's great is that despite these disagreements, there's been quite an amazing amount of consensus on the principles of what makes Carmel unique and special and how these should be followed in the future. I wanted to say that the basic new format from which the steering committee, which the steering committee has created, has some real power by organizing the guidelines under six overarching principles. And by doing it this way, yes, it's eliminated redundancies and made things more concise, but it also establishes and sets clear priorities and a hierarchy for the evaluation of projects. These principles can, in a much more powerful way, be front of mind when beginning to design projects for us, design professionals, and front of mind for the planning commission and staff, and possibly the DRB when they start evaluating these things. The planning commission staff and DRB can easily keep referring back to these. I like the idea of having a checklist and on how a project meets the guidelines. But I also suggested during the steering committee meetings, and I, and I have sadly done it, I've done previous applications, having each applicant submit a project description in which they directly write how the project addresses, first, the six overarching design principles, and then also the subheadings. I feel like the basic substance of the original guidelines are valid, but they have too easily been, not been used by designers and the city to evaluate them. The new format, format I would suggest is by having these priorities makes this much easier. I think there's still more work to do on the content, and there's still significant work to do on the, for example, the landscape guidelines, which are very important. But there's been a lot of progress. I think the steering committee is filled with just a lot of experience and ability. And with staff and the community, I think they can finish the job. I know myself, as an HRB member, a longtime architect here, along with photographer Ian Martin, a professional photographer, have volunteered to help with the steering, help the steering committee and the staff on photographs, which I think is really critical for the effort. We are drawing from the, only the best examples of Carmel to give vivid photographic descriptions of these design principles and guidelines. And you'll be able to look through the finished product and fully understand what makes Carmel Carmel. So I think this has been a great process. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Appreciate it. Next speaker.
Phew, that was a load. Thomas Sitt, architect. Because there were discussion tonight about a design review board, architectural review commission, that just by itself indicates that there are subjective qualities and decisions that have to be made on the part of the board. If it was just a Pillsbury Doughboy sheet cake recipe, we wouldn't need the boards, right? It'd be check the list, bum, 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 done list. So there's a subjective quality that wherever ARC ends up is going to have to take in consideration. And the reason I'm bringing that up is what I need to understand as this gets refined is, we talk about zoning. To me, zoning is finite, height, setback, site coverage, use. But when we talk about guidelines, to me, guidelines mean should and not must. Because that's where I think the designer review board can really be effective in managing 100 pages of variables. No two lots are alike in Carmel, except maybe their dimensions. And what I've found is, we've got 11 projects going right now. Seven of them are historic, and we've got to watch every little nickel and every little twig on every site, but they're all different. That's where HRB and ARC are going to need to evaluate. Is the guideline a rule, or is a guideline a guideline? I think making that clear to applicants will be really important.
Thank you, Thomas. Next speaker. Anybody else in here wishing to speak? Don't be shy.
Neil Cruz, and I just want to underline so much of what has been said before me. I particularly agree with Eric Dyer's comments that, you know, we have not agreed, we have really gone at it in this Design Traditions Steering Committee. But you know what's beginning to happen? We're beginning to develop respect for each other, even though we don't agree. You know what, what comes out of a good fight? And you respect your opponent? That's what's happening. You just heard, both sides, we all love it. This is the grist for the mill. This is the beating heart of the Design Traditions process. What is happening in that Design Traditions room is incredible, and it's wonderful. So I hope you can see, we all support it. And I agree that we will come up with the best design guidelines with this. The Victoria Beach has been extremely helpful and intelligent. Some of her wording has been brilliant. So we've invented a lot of things. But everybody on that Design Traditions Steering Committee has given enormous amounts of time and energy. I mean, to the point of exhaustion. So we really need to thank them. They've given their heart and soul to this, so. Thank you, and I hope you see that we're doing great.
Thank you, Neil. Next speaker. Victor, are you planning on speaking tonight?
I'm here for questions.
Okay, all right. Then I'll assume there's nobody else in the room. Is there anybody in the Zoom world wishing to speak? Cindy Lloyd. She's on the floor.
Thank you very much, Mayor Potter. Somebody from the public has to speak, so why not me? I'm feeling a bit like an elder, and I was listening to everybody speak about the wonderful work of the Design Review Committee's Steering Committee. And I just kept thinking, gosh, these kids have done such a great job. And then I realized, maybe some of them are even close to my age. At any rate, I want to echo what everybody has said. The steering committee has done an amazingly fantastic job. Victoria has been very clear in, in her directions. And she has created a document from which everybody could speak. It's, for me, it's been an education. I think Eric Dyer has gone beyond the call of duty. He's really made excellent comments about the issues at hand. And I mean, I'm just so proud of everybody. So thanks very much.
Thank you. Anybody else in Zoom or land wishing to speak? I don't see anybody. Is anybody in the room here wishing to speak? Bring it back to council and for deliberation, possible direction. This is a received report update, the status of the report. No specific actions requested, but it does say provide direction. Any direction?
Well, I would just like to say that I, you know, from the beginning of the process, when we decided to have a steering committee at all, perhaps we might have had a little more guidelines about the steering committee and what they were going to do and what weren't going to do. But I think, I tried to be very hands-off, but I did sneak a few looks at the YouTube meetings. And I was really impressed by the passion and the thoroughness that this group and the members of the public that have joined this group have put forth. And if you haven't watched any of those meetings, I urge you to do so because there is not one person on that committee that isn't very, very dedicated to putting out the best product possible. And because we know how important this is to our future as far as design, I think what Eric said about, let's be patient and do it right, is what we all aspire for this committee to do, to get it right, to go back and forth if they need to, to hash it out. There have been some bumps here and there, but really, I think they're doing an excellent job. And I urge you to look in on the YouTube if you have a chance because it's pretty educational, actually, how complete the process is. And I would like to say, I wish the best for Melanie. I understand she's had a medical issue and we're, I'm sorry, she isn't here tonight, but she has put forth tremendous effort, both 20 years ago and again this time. So thank you all. I just have to say, thank you, thank you. And I know we're going to end up with a good product for all of these, this new planning commission, new DRB, whatever it is to work from. And it will be much easier to actually teach people who are going to be on those committees, the importance of these six overlying ideas. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Karen. Other comments? Alessandra, then Jeff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also wanted to echo the comments that Karen just made as far as thanking everyone for their passion and everyone for their involvement and the tremendous amount of time that everyone is putting in, not just the members of the group itself, but the volunteers and the people who attend these meetings regularly and participate. So thank you all for being part of this process. And I just wanted to take up something that Mr. Hood said. He brought up subjective design, and that is... He brought up subjective design, and that is what has, the qualities that have created Carmel, the Carmel that we love, the Carmel that people want to live in, and the Carmel that people want to visit. And I'm very concerned about something that's coming up in the housing element report, and that is removal of subjective design standards and only doing objective design. And I'm very concerned with what that is going to mean for our community and what the housing is going to result. And that's something that we can certainly talk about and discuss more when we have our meeting on the 15th. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff?
Thank you. Thank you to all the committee members and members of the public who have been participating in this, in this process. I appreciate it, and I think that the, the end result, I think that you're on the right path. I have a couple of comments to make. I think it's worthwhile to go back to what happened back in 2019, when, when I had first joined the council, and Mark Weiner, Mark Weiner tried his version of the, of the design, of the design comments. And there were a couple of meetings in a room around a big table, not unlike the table that you have, that you guys use. And the only people that showed up, and I know, I know, I look at Thomas and Eric out here, and maybe they won't like this comment, the only people that showed up for those design meetings were architects and builders. And when the, when the plan came to the council, and you know, Carrie was on, Carrie was with me, and with me and Jan, and Dave and Bobby, what had happened was the design guidelines got softened to ameliorate the, the issues at the architects and builders. And there were some, you know, for example, the, the volumetric stuff had sort of, had sort of been lessened a little bit because they were too complicated and it was too difficult to understand. And throughout all the design guidelines, a number of these things have been, a number of these things have been lessened because they were too difficult. And there wasn't anybody that was representing the community at those meetings and representing sort of what I call the built, the built interests of Carmel. And so we kind of stopped it, and then COVID happened, and everything, everything sort of fell apart. And when we started the project again, council member, the, the professional services agreement with Norrie came up back at the beginning of 2022, and Karen pulled it off of the consent agenda with the council's blessing and went back, went back to, went back and worked with Brandon for a couple of, a couple of weeks, and it came back the following month. And on that, on that professional services agreement, there's an Exhibit A, which basically serves as a project plan. And the project plan, you know, the project plan in here describes, you know, from the perspective of Mr. Winter and his firm, who is supposed to do what? And, 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 and what the schedule was and whatnot. And we go back to the, you know, my, my sort of comments before about the schedule, you know, I think that from, you know, it's great to hear, it's really great, I know everybody is vested in having the best possible outcome for this project. But the council's direction when we started this project back in 2022 was to have a 1.5 version of this project, not a two, not a 2.0. You know, we had a lengthy discussion on the dais about what we expect, you know, what we expected or what our hopes were, whatever. And that, that discussion involved the issue of money, it involved the issue of time, it involved the issue of acceptance by the community, involved the acceptance by the architecture community and the building community. There are a lot of things that go into the creation of a document such as this, the last of which is acceptance by the community, especially the architecture community that's going to be up at the design review board with the, with these documents. And the council made a decision to have a 1.5 version, and we put this budget on it, we put this time on it, and that's where we were. And now, you know, now we're a year behind schedule, we're almost a year behind schedule. You know, Norrie, you know, three months have gone by since the, since Norrie's draft was released, and it appears that Norrie really isn't being used all that much, and now he's going to disappear. And now we're at the project management stage of this project where we have a conflict between the time, you know, the calendar time that the project is going to be pushed out to because of both the money constraints and now the constraints on Brandon's project, and the final, you know, and the final sort of 1.5 versus 2.0. And those are the kinds of decisions that the council made a year and a half ago. Like, those are the decisions that, you know, we had a discussion about, and we decided, you know, sort of what we wanted. And so I hear the, I hear the, the, you know, the notion that we, we, you know, we want this new revised document, and I think that it's great. But my purview, you know, and sort of, you know, our purview and sort of running the city, and especially Brandon's purview, because Brandon is the person that's going to have to implement these documents. You know, when the Design Traditions Committee leaves, it's going to be Brandon and Brandon's staff and the new design review board, or the old planning commission, however it is that that works out, that are going to be left with these documents. And so I think that, you know, sort of yanking, you know, and yanking is my word, not Brandon's word. I think yanking that, yanking the, the control or the writing of the document out of Brandon's hand into the committee, you know, into the committee's hand presents a number of issues. You know, one issue, you know, one issue, as I spoke of before, is that Brandon's the person that's going to have to support it. And it's not the committee, it's not the committee that's going to, you know, that runs staff and will have to be supporting this document, supporting the things that are written in this document. And so my concern about, and I agree, you know, in concept, I agree with the rewrite of the document under these six principles. I think that that is a really good idea. But my concern is that by reorganizing the document, we add further to the length of the schedule. Because when the second draft is released, what happens when the second draft is released if the building community doesn't like it? Like, what happens if there's a rebellion? The worst thing that could happen, you know, the worst thing that I see happening when I think about sort of our role in protecting the community, is that these documents get released, they get approved by the planning commission and by the city council because we don't really know, and then we run up against a design review board and a building community that doesn't like them, and we have a revolt. Like, this community is known for having revolts. And, and so my fear is that we will get to that point, and we won't know how to proceed, and then all of a sudden, there's going to be a big logjam, and there are going to be a bunch of Paul Miller editorials about how incompetent we all are. And this is not, you know, that's not an insignificant risk. You know, and so we've, we've delayed the project, the project is out of, the project is, you know, out of time, because it's six months, you know, it's six months later, it's going to be a year later, however it is. And I'd really like to fix that. You know, I'd really like to sort of understand moving forward, you know, what the project schedule is, like, what are the deadlines? Who's going to own the project? How much is it going to cost? You know, what are the resources assigned? You know, the advantage of using Norrie and this, this Exhibit A that Karen so painfully worked out before was that Norrie was doing everything. You know, it was Norrie's project, and when something went wrong, like something went wrong in February, it was Norrie's issue. And when, when that happened in February, when something did go wrong, and, and I'm taking everybody's word for it, that something went wrong, that problem could have been fixed by going back to Norrie. You know, by saying, Norrie, we're the steering committee, we want these things fixed. You know, by going back to staff and leaving Norrie and staff with control of the document, but making him do this himself. He works for you. Like, he works for this council, and he works for, for everybody on design, you know, so does Brandon. Like, they're resources, like, this is what they do, and this is what they're good at. Like, they spend their life doing this thing, and we don't. And now we have a situation where the sort of committee is off, sort of writing the documents, which in addition to presenting Brown Act problems, having one committee member write the documents, you know, and presenting them to everybody else at the, at the meeting, results in a situation where committee members might not feel comfortable critiquing other committee members' work at the meeting. You know, when Chip produces a staff report for us, we all, you know, Chip knows how all of us think, and he produces a staff report, you know, he takes some stab. You know, if a staff report has political implications, he takes some stab at what we might like, or he hedges his bets, or does something like that. And part of our relationship with Chip is that we trust that Chip does that. Like, I trust that, that Chip, you know, that Chip looks out for us. And part of the advantage of using staff to write this document is that everybody should trust Brandon to, to take your input. And there is an escape valve here. You can come talk to the five of us. You know, if you don't like what's going on, the five of us are here, like, we're the sponsors. Like, this is our project. As Brandon stated at the beginning in big letters, we are the sponsors of this project. Like, we are the people, we actually do hire and fire Brandon through Chip. Like, this, and this is how the government works. And so by, by taking ownership of the project, now the committee has taken, now the committee owns it. And I'm not sure if the project turns out, like, if the project turns out not so well, I'm not sure who in fact to blame. Like, I, because I can't really blame Brandon anymore, and I can't blame Chip, and I don't really want to blame anybody. You know, what I want to do is have a good project that in the end, you know, now, next year, will work for everyone. And I'm not exactly sure, you know, I think that there's a risk that that's not going to happen. And that concerns me. You know, it concerns me that we will produce a document that, you know, that's maybe not going to work, or that we end up in this loop of not having Norrie, and then, you know, Karen talks about the ADA, Karen talks about the accessory dwelling unit ordinance, which isn't getting done, because this project is now consuming all of Brandon's time. So there are all these moving pieces involved in, in this project, and this project affects all of planning. And so everything in planning has stopped, because now this project is going to take another year. And what I would really like to do is give at least, you know, sort of the authorship of the document back to Brandon and sort of move back into the mode where everybody, everybody sort of operates like a traditional planning committee, or a traditional design review board, or a traditional Forest and Beach Commission, or a traditional city council, where staff writes the reports and staff does the work, and the committee and the public provide input. Like, that's, that's, that's where I would like to get to tonight. And, you know, I believe that good processes lead to good outcomes. And this document, you know, that Karen, that Karen worked on, this Exhibit A, was a good process, it was vetted, you know, a year ago. And I would like, I would like us to return to the sort of standard process where staff owns the document, and then if it doesn't work out, I can blame Brandon. Because that's really important to me. That's how, that's how everybody works. Got to blame someone. And I don't want to blame Victoria, and I don't want to blame Don, and I don't want to blame Mary Ann, and I don't want to blame Doug or Melanie. I want to blame Brandon. And I'll say, I'll say, I'll say in addition, so I would ask for, I would ask for the council to agree with me, and whether, whether you do or not, you know, I say what I said. I will say, you know, in response to sort of Neil's comments about duking it out, the problem with these comments, the problem with duking it out is that having these arguments, like what happened at that meeting in May, that does real lasting damage. And it's okay to say, it's okay to say, yeah, we're going to duke it out, and then it's going to be fine afterwards, but it never works that way. It simply doesn't work that way. You know, I, you know, we have, when we have disagreement, you know, when I have, you know, fights with people, things are never the same. And I need, you know, we all need, you know, the group in that room to work well together. And right now, having watched that meeting, that was pretty awful. You know, what happened in that meeting and the meeting before, it was pretty awful. And, you know, and, and, you know, someone suggested I watch it, and I could barely get through it, I have to say. You know, I watched the first 20 minutes and the last 10 minutes, and I could barely get through it. It was really difficult for me to watch. And so I would ask the public and, and the, you know, the committee members and the public, and especially the committee members who, you know, control the meeting, who act as the chair for Dave, you know, act in Dave's chair, to control that sort of stuff at meetings. And if tempers are hot, then you need to take a break. You know, if people are yelling at committee members, or calling committee members' name, or calling members of the public name, then you need to take a 10-minute recess or do something so that, so that tempers can cool, but you can't, that stuff can't go on. And, you know, it's, it's really, it's a really bad look for the committee, and it's a really bad look for the city. And so, thank you. Thank you for letting me do that.
Interesting. Brandon, it sounds like a lot of responsibility has been put on your shoulders. What do you got to say here?
I don't want council member Barron to blame me, I guess. Is that, is that enough? No, I don't really, I don't really have any response. I'm literally, you know, this was meant to be a report, and I'm taking feedback from the council, and if the charge is to try to drive more back towards the more succinct schedule that we had laid out, the original project, we can, we can endeavor to do that. We're here, of course, we take direction from the council, so if that's the, the direction of council tonight, then that's what we'll do with the project. But we are certainly behind. I mean, that's, that was part of the reason for the presentation. I'm not trying to hide the fact that we're behind on the project.
So what's your date, what's your comfort level with the date that's said here? New target?
Well, right now, it's pretty good. I mean, I wouldn't have put it up there if I didn't believe it. But I believe the other dates before, too, so, you know, I, I feel like these are reasonable dates to get this thing done now at this point. Bobby?
Well, I guess I, I heard everything that Jeff said, and there's some things that I do agree with as far as this, this project, as far as I understood it. It was a project that our staff was going to handle, and we, as a council member, each one of us chose somebody to go in there and help give Brandon direction. I didn't think that it was going to take over Brandon's job, and so I'm a little bit confused. I think that's what you were saying, right, Jeff? In a nutshell, is we, we started off with Brandon has a task to write 1.5. We were each tasked with choosing somebody in our community that we thought could help Brandon do that. And it's turned into, it seems like more than that. Now, from the hearing the public today, it sounds like it turned out to something better. I'm not sure. I haven't watched, I haven't been to any of the meetings. I sit up here. And so I would like to see Brandon be more the, the head, head pin on this, and go back to this committee giving Brandon direction, or not direction, but ideas and thoughts and maybe things that he's not seeing, giving him information on that.
Karen?
Yes. I hear what you're saying about being behind, but we do have to remember Norrie was behind. They didn't even get the document until later, and the document did have redundancies, and it did have some problems that needed to be fixed, which they have diligently worked to do. They have also diligently worked to take a very unwieldy document and boil it down to some things that someone can actually get through without two or three nights of, nighttime reading. There are things that need to be added back in, probably, like the context, like some of the, the documents that will impress people about what it is to live here. I agree that. But I, I was actually pleasantly surprised after I got over the initial little kerfuffle that happened, that was very unpleasant, as you said, but the people stayed at the table, nobody left the room, nobody stomped out, pounded their fist, they stayed there, and they got back to business. And the business became quite productive after that. So I think we need to be patient. I think Brandon should say the things that he can do and will do and spell that out, and then the committee can continue to finesse the document they've worked so hard on. And I think we're going to have an excellent product that will come from the community, not be imposed on the community. And I think that's vitally important. And we are involving quite a bit of the community, kerfuffles or not, so.
Well, I just pine here. I share a little bit of Jeff's frustration at sometimes, but I also think that we've got a good, good outcome right tonight. I think we felt a lot of positivity going on, but I'm concerned that the calendar continues to slip and we don't have true authorship of the project. I think, you know, if Brandon was a little more assertive and said to me, Dave, I think we've got this under control, I'd be a little more comfortable, but I don't know if that's the case or not. So I'm, I'm a little bit twixt in between, honestly. I think, I think, Jeff, you made a good point. That was an embarrassing moment as far as behavior goes. Very, very embarrassing, not appropriate at all. But on the other hand, it is, it is what it is. And if there's a lesson learned about public behavior from that, maybe that's the advantage to it. I don't know. But it's a tough one. But it's a tough one.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I, as all of you, I've said before, I was on the committee that drafted the original design guidelines. I was on the Design Traditions Committee. I was a young senior planner. I had a good head of hair. Mr. Winter was working with us. We had a massive committee. It took a long time. But the model that Mr. Barron, and in fact, this week, I found the original secret documents that I signed in blue ink from 2001 to 2003 for the initial studies to launch those programs. Can someone please turn, oh, it's Madam Tice again. She's 0 for 2 tonight. And so, but the model, the model that we used last time was that, again, the staff was drafting guidelines with Mr. Winter. And then, we were using the Design Traditions Committee for editing. And that is the way that traditionally, public process works. And that's the way we draft all kinds of documents and ordinances. And, you know, what this council has done lately, which has worked really well, is setting up ad hoc committees. And several of you sit on ad hoc committees on specific topics. So, again, I can hearken back. I can remember the rooms, being at the Women's Center in 2000, 2001, and 2002, and going through this process. So, you know, from my perspective, since I was there 25 years ago, I can tell you that's the way we worked the process last time.
And it took a long time.
What I would say, you know, what I would say in response to Karen's comments, you know, I think, I think you, with respect, I mean, I think you mischaracterize, you know, a document that was put together by Brandon as being imposed on the committee. And I think, you know, given Chip's remarks about how, you know, the 2003 document came to be, I don't think anybody views the 2003 document as having been imposed on Carmel. Like, that was a document that was drafted by a professional who's an expert at drafting documents such as that one, with a variety, you know, with a huge amount of public input. That was basically constructed by the public with his help and sort of given to Carmel. And I think that that's what Brandon is trying to do. I think that that's what the traditional model of developing this 1.5 document is. And I think it's a, I think it's not correct to say that a document that was, that would be developed by Brandon with the input, with the heavy input of the five committee members that we selected and the public, would be imposed on Carmel. I don't think that that's, I don't think that that's accurate.
I was referring to how the public might perceive it and feel it. When they're in the room, working these things out, I think they feel a lot more ownership as a community of the opportunity to participate that way, instead of just being editors at the end. They are actually helping each other identify and discover some of the very most important parts of what our community wants to have these design guidelines reflect. And it is a process that sometimes has painful moments. Whenever you work things out and you, you know, go back and forth about different things and come to consensus, it also ends up being a healing process when you get to that consensus. When you are proud of a product that you have produced with hills and valleys along the way, but you've had the opportunity to really be part of the formation of it. And, you know, if, if there's a way to speed up some of the rest of it, with Brandon taking part of that over and crafting some of those things, well, that's something that I think we could hear from Brandon about. But I think this committee has been more than willing to spend their time and their energy and their expertise. We didn't choose a shy committee. We chose people who had experience in planning, experience in administration, experience in design.
We might have chosen a consultant, though, that didn't quite have the hootsba that he had before. Norrie was maybe not what we thought he was. I hate to say that, but it sounds to me like he wasn't quite the dynamo we were expecting. So I think that's probably a bit of a problem here. I mean, I don't want to slam him because he's not here. Fact of the matter is, though, he hasn't been in attendance a whole lot, anyway.
Could I just add really quick? The two products, the residential guidelines and the commercial, when you add those up, they're almost 200 pages. They're not user-friendly. You want something that's simple and easy to understand, that people are going to be able to take and read over and get it, rather than, I mean, we barely struggled through reading all of those 200 pages. So it's not something the average person is going to want to go through. So you want to make them as simple and clear and concise and short as possible.
That's right. Thank you.
Well, we've certainly had enough discussion. I think, Brandon, come up here a second, would you? So what I hear is that the council is in agreement that the process has got some good things in it, some bad things in it. I think we would like to see you begin getting a little bit more respect, which I think you've gained now. I think there was a period where you didn't have the respect of the committee. And I think that's unfortunate. But I think now you have the command that you need. And I think the council's giving you the backing that you need. And I hope that the committee understands. I'm glad you guys are all here, honestly. Sorry Melanie's not here, but she is. She did have an incident. But I do want to commend the committee for being here and taking the time to listen and understand that we're frustrated just because of the fact that it's taken so much time. But, you know, we also have a lot of pressure to get all these other things done. And we were at the cell tower, and we got the, we got all these other things. We've been accused of taking on too many things. Maybe if we didn't have so much time taken away, we'd have more time to get these things done. So I hope that, I hope that we're doing here tonight to give Brandon his support for you and support for the committee also. We think we can work this out, but let's get down to it. I don't want to see this date slip again, honestly. And I'm going to, I figure this is cast at stone right now for me.
Understood. Thank you. And I just, I learned early not to correct a mayor. But I do want to say that the steering committee has been respectful of me the whole time. There's never been a disrespect there. I think what we've done is we've learned how to work together a little bit more, and a little more trust for each other. But they've always been very respectful of me, and they've been very nice to work with.
Good. All right. I think we've had enough discussion of this topic. Anybody else want to opine otherwise? You can't. Yeah, Victoria, if you'd like to say something, why don't you come on up?
I just wanted to take a moment to thank Brandon. I have just had such a fantastic experience working with Brandon. I think that the clarity, it's hard to see probably from out up where you are, all are. But we got the document, and we've worked on it for three months. That's it. My perspective, I haven't cleared this with him, but I think it's probably a halfway point in that three months. So three months, another three months, and that's where we are. We have been, we waited for that document for, and our first meeting was 11 months after we were appointed. And I just want to take a moment to just commend Brandon. First of all, of course, it goes without saying, I say this at every meeting, that the public has been amazing. The steering committee has been amazing. It's just been a true pleasure to interact and solve these problems together and just work out what we think is really just an accessibility issue. It is not, we talk, we've joked about 1.5. Maybe we're at 1.52, maybe we're at 1.53. We're not, there's no big content changes. It's really a formatting and accessibility project that we've sort of come upon as prioritizing. But I am just really appreciative of Brandon's professionalism, his demeanor, his humor, his willingness to help support our, the super table, his going to his garage and pulling out his speaker wires so that we could all talk in a more productive and expeditious way. In my view, three months on a document is pretty darn good. So, again, Brandon, it has been truly a pleasure. And I just, you know, I think there, once we got that material and got to work, it has been smooth sailing. The kerfuffles aside, and I just want to, I want to say what an honor and privilege it's been to work with everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Victoria. Nice close. All right, we'll consider this item massaged enough for the evening. We'll move on to the public hearings. First item, first reading of Ordinance 23, 2023-005, which is to renew the Carmel Restaurant Improvement District. So I don't think this is going to take that long.
I, this is the first reading, councillor, should I go ahead? I mean, the council will have to read the title. But we were hoping to hear a brief, brief presentation from Ms. Herzog and her compatriot, Mr. Burghart, on the Carmel Restaurant Improvement District. And then, there is a decision point. But of course, this is hospitality. In this case, our restaurateurs self-assessing, self-taxing themselves. And that's not a tax, it's an assessment. But I think they want to take a minute to run through a couple of slides, if that's okay, Mr. Mayor.
Absolutely. Floor is yours.
Yes, if you'll allow us, and thank you very much for having us this evening, Mayor, Council. This is Jeff.
Hi, Jeff Burghart.
And Amy Herzog with Visit Carmel. And we just wanted to take a minute, an opportunity, to give you a brief background and high-level overview of the RID, Restaurant Improvement District, as it is before you as a hearing today, and will be on your agenda next month for a final passage to create a, renew this improvement district. So, the RID was formed originally on January 1st of 2019. It was restaurant-driven. A group of restaurants banded together, came to Visit Carmel upon seeing the success that we were having with the Hospitality Improvement District, and found very appealing the self-sustaining financial funding model that the HID was using. But had some specific restaurant marketing focus that they wanted to pursue with an additional budget. So, when we formed the RID, we had four primary objectives: to promote a unique and diverse dining destination, to increase restaurant revenue, especially during the slowest periods of the year, to run marketing campaigns that would serve all restaurants of all different types, and then to use integrated marketing strategies, PR, advertising, social media, to attain those goals. And for a little more about what that marketing ended up being, here's Jeff.
Great. So it's been just about four years. And being a world-class destination, we wanted to make sure that our visuals were really respective of the aesthetic that we want for this brand and everything else. So we shot at all the restaurants, and we continued to update that. So it's very photo-driven, very video-driven. Over the four years, we've driven continuous traffic to the site to the point where the restaurant pages are just below the hotels, and that's kind of where we want it. It used to be further down the list, but we are driving more and more traffic, so much that, from the beginning in 2019, of course, we went into COVID, but nearly double now that we've kind of rebounded in terms of that site traffic. And that drives more traffic to those restaurants, and in turn, to the restaurants themselves in terms of guests. We recently redid the whole website, including the restaurant section. We're touting our 60 restaurants, 17 wine tasting. And we have a claim, and this is a unique claim for Carmel, more restaurants per capita than any other U.S. city. We've done the math, and we can claim it. We're marketers. Anyhow, pretty unique. We use marketing that reaches broad areas, television and special segments, greater Bay Area, Sacramento, LA, San Diego. We use a lot of digital advertising, of course, with great targeting to the type of people we want to be bringing to the area. We're also targeting people in the area while they're visiting, and locals, because locals and visitors that are here, we want to have dining in Carmel. From a PR standpoint, as we continue to tout our sort of burgeoning food and wine scene here, this story out of The Chronicle in February, how this treasured coastal enclave became a culinary hotspot. Forty-five years ago, when we started this, it wasn't quite there. And I think that this continual advertising, and of course, these great restaurants coming into the village, has just elevated the food and wine scene here. Shifting over to major projects as part of the Restaurant Improvement District is Culinary Week, happening right now. Some of you attended the kickoff on Friday. It was a great success. We felt that that was really signature of what this is going to be now that we're sort of post-COVID, to a point where we can have those big events. From a media standpoint, digital TV, print, we have direct mailers that go to locals here at 93921. We're reaching not just local, but again, Bay Area, Sacramento. Culinary Week with, we had an app that we were paying for annually. We've now built that into the website, so we've cut costs there, made it more efficient for the end user, as well as the restaurants. TV commercials, special segments, we had Bashar all across California on NBC with a truly live segment. And there are many others that we're cutting. More digital and TV that drive people to come and to Culinary Week. And then, in-market, the banners down Ocean Avenue, print ads, and our handy map that goes throughout the hotels, as well as to the local audience. RID renewal, I'll hand it back over to Amy.
Jeff? So, right, you know, if you take a look at the breakdown of Visit Carmel's funding sources for this fiscal year, you'll see in blue there that the bulk of our budget does come from assessment on overnight stays with the hotels. More than 81% comes from that function. However, the RID provides the budget that we use to support the programs that Jeff just very quickly outlined. We didn't want to take too much time with it, but I think you get the gist of how restaurant-specific needs are different than the rest of the destination. You know, our funding partners, which includes the city, are truly leveraging a very robust, integrated, and fairly complex marketing program at this point. And the beauty of it is that everyone's got skin in the game, and everyone's got a seat at the table. Probably one of our most key metrics in terms of measuring our impact is taking a look at our revenue, or the RID revenue. So this is, of course, the 0.25% assessment coming back to, through the city and back into Visit Carmel's marketing programs. And you can see, with the exception of 2020, for obvious reasons, that revenue has been growing over the past four years. There's probably a lot of factors involved with that, but we're really pleased with the direction that this is headed and see, you know, that that would truly be a very measurable metric for us. And then, just to remind you, in terms of the parameters for the renewal, we are recommending maintaining the same assessment rate, which is 0.25%. We're looking at a nine-and-a-half-year term. The reason it's not a 10-year term is because recently, Visit Carmel changed its financial reporting period from a calendar year to a fiscal year. And we are just trying to kind of align the, all of our different funding sources to be on that same calendar. But with this hearing, and then hopeful approval at the next council meeting, we would then be primed and ready to renew this new term, starting January 1st, 2024. And thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. Well done. Appreciate it. Nice job. All righty. So, why don't we see if there are any questions of council members? I don't see any. Is there anybody in the public wishing to speak to this item? Anybody in Zoom world wishing to speak?
Yes, I'd like to say something, Mayor Potter. Dale Byrne.
Go right ahead, Dale.
Let me get set up here. Good evening, Mayor Potter, City Council, City Leadership, and other attendees. I'm Dale Byrne, speaking as a resident of Carmel by the Sea. The CHID, or Hotel Improvement District, funding process has already been changed to 10 years, so to a large extent, like our dependence on tourism revenue, this ship has mostly sailed. However, I feel I need to speak out on issues the council and other residents might want to consider on this subject. I'd like to surface a few of them. First is that the city is funding Visit Carmel with significant assessment revenues, and $120,000 a year in miscellaneous support, while perhaps disregarding the increased costs necessary to run the Chamber's Visitor Center, which is where Visit Carmel does send people from their website. The Chamber is Visit Carmel's on-the-ground support team. Second, digital marketing will be changing fast with artificial intelligence. Yes, it takes effort to revisit this, but you are being asked to approve a 10-year contract, which involves about $2.5 million in assessment revenue. Some of this could be used in the future for other vital city needs, and multiple readings must have been put in place for a reason. Third, while organically grown Carmel events exist, Visit Carmel has been creating their own professionally marketed, high-end events that are changing the image of our town. In addition, their charter of drawing in visitors during non-peak months and mid-week has morphed into June and August, and they probably don't want to move them back. Historic events should be supported, and new events should fit into the culture and historic nature of the village. Finally, Visit Carmel has what is called in-market media promotions. Their marketing term "in-market" means "our village" and "our home." Decisions have been made regarding this, perhaps without any public process. This includes "Love Carmel Like a Local" banners and signs. In essence, Visit Carmel has moved from managing a website to branding our physical city, using a marketing campaign called Destination Stewardship, with these words that are clearly aimed at tourists. I have been told many times that this is not Disneyland, but this branding looks very similar to what you would see there. In fact, Visit Carmel's latest annual report discloses what we have and will soon be seeing around the village, including Ocean Avenue banners, a new series of banners, we've already seen those, window clings placed at hotels, shops, restaurants, businesses, et cetera, display case maps, add new stewardship logos to maps, city signage, magazine racks, trashcans, beach entrances, display maps, and even city vehicles, swag, stickers, baseball caps, sweatshirts, T-shirts, and patches. I believe our founders would not be very happy with this, along with me and many others I know. I have surfaced some ideas to Amy and Jeff on how to make this type of stewardship campaign more holistic and aimed at residents as well as visitors, and will bring it up at the Visit Carmel Board Meeting next week. This is Carmel by the Sea. This is our home. As it says on the wall behind you, this is primarily a residential community.
Dale, if you'd summarize, I'd appreciate it. Your time is up.
Last sentence. Residents and elected officials should be in total control of the marketing and branding of our physical village, and that just isn't the case. We need to fix that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dale. Shirley Moon, do you want to speak?
Thank you. It seems like in the past, there has been a very decent balance, excuse me, between the residential needs of Carmel by the Sea and the business community needs. There is a mutual benefit to have the needs of each in balance. I'm so sorry. We are no longer in that sweet spot of balance. The Management District Plan, also known as CRID, has contributed to that imbalance by the hyper-marketing that is going on to entice visitors. So, the game is on. Who can spend the most money in slick advertising to capture the most foot traffic? Doesn't anyone remember why people want to visit Carmel? Do you think that having well-tended gardens, clean streets, clean public restrooms, quaint shops, discreet signage, charming cottages, a pristine beach, and a feeling of safety would be a draw to our city? We are at risk of destroying those qualities. One has to remember, one has to wonder why we aren't creating the ideal product for people to talk about to all their friends when they get home from visiting Carmel. We, as residents, are now subject to the impacts of extreme tourism, without the city setting aside appropriate funds to offset the impact. We are subject to graphic design graffiti carved on nice wooden plaques on Ocean Avenue, and even displayed at Sunset Center. What exactly does "Love Carmel Like a Local" have to do with promotion of restaurants? We go to great lengths to tamp down the visual noise in the village. Why are these signs acceptable? I'm against giving this district a 10-year approval. As a community, we constantly need to step back from hyper-marketing and evaluate how to stay in balance. Perhaps a yearly review would assist in that goal. Thank you.
Thank you, Shirley. Is there anybody else wishing to testify today? All right. Is there anybody in the room here wishing to speak?
Hi, David O'Neil again. I just wanted to say something quickly. I used to have an internet-based radio station, so I got really involved in internet marketing and stuff. It's always changing, and there's always somebody who's going to do it better. So, you know, it's just a good idea not to lock yourselves in too far in advance on stuff that's always changing so quickly. Just something to think about.
Thank you, David. Anybody else? Last call. Jeff, he already spoke.
Can I just clarify? One of the things we're talking about right now is primarily just the RID, and Destination Stewardship falling into the Visit Carmel budget. I just wanted to make sure we're clear about the Restaurant Improvement District, which doesn't necessarily fund the Destination Stewardship and some of the things we're talking about. So, I think making sure the RID is all about the restaurants, that's what the restaurants would want to have us speaking to on this, on this point. So, I think all the points are well taken, but just wanted to make sure.
Always going to ask for that clarification, anyway, so thank you.
Thanks.
Save me the trouble. Okay, we'll bring it back to council for discussion and direction. Council members?
Well, I can ask a question to Jeff or Amy, either one of you can answer this, probably. Your marketing isn't set in stone, is it? Or is it, as David just pointed out, is it ultimately changing all the time in what you're picking and choosing and how you're marketing?
Absolutely. Sixteen years I've been marketing the city, it's evolved from all traditional to a huge mix of all digital with some traditional. We will constantly look for the most optimistic and digital slash traditional mixes, and I totally agree with the fact that we're not out to graffiti the town, we're out to have a consistent brand look and feel across things. We are also a destination, and they're in the destination marketing world. We're competing with Santa Barbara and Napa, and we're doing a lot of these things that are very similar to destinations, but unique to Carmel. And I think aesthetically, there's always going to be an opinion, you know, from one look to another. And so, I think sharing that opinion, and we've heard from Dale and Shirley and others, and so, as far as that's concerned, we will continue to evolve, not only the look, but of course, the marketing, and with AI coming onboard, you know, we're going to be ahead of the curve. And we're working with outside firms, too, to help us with that lead.
Can I have one more question?
Yeah, please.
Your meetings, I know they're public, and do you get many public citizens coming there and listening to where you're going and how you're spending the money that you have assessed?
Yeah, definitely, there's a small group that come. Dale has come traditionally almost every meeting, and he's kind of, he promised he's going to come back some more. Been a great asset to the process. And I think that where we're, our differences are minimal. I think we can all come together on the process. We've done so well this far. And to me, you know, we're here to do what's best for the city, what's best for the businesses as it relates to tourism. And I think that we want to do it in a tasteful way and on-brand and so.
And one last, one final. And that is, can you maybe work on getting your meetings posted in a more public area? I don't know how you could do that, if it's at the post office, or at the Pine Cone, or in the Facebook world, or somehow that maybe more public involvement could come to your meetings.
Yeah, that sounds good. That's easy to put on the city's calendar, for sure.
Thank you, Jeff.
Yeah, thanks.
All right. Any other council members with comments or concerns? I just comment that this is not the lion's share of the money that comes into the fund of the organization. It's $240,000 roughly, so annually, that's not that much. And it's specifically imposed by the Carmel restaurants themselves. I think that they're willing to pay the price for being second child to the hotel industry. I think it's a fairly good investment with a decent return on the investment, so I'm going to support the action. And if we get a motion, well, actually, we need the council to read in the title of the ordinance.
I'll be glad to do that. It's ordinance number 2023-005, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Carmel by the Sea, Renewing the Carmel Restaurant Improvement District for a term of nine years and six months, beginning January 1, 2024, or as soon as possible thereafter, and ending on June 30 of 2033.
Good. Now, we'd add a motion.
I'll second it.
Way further in.
So, the motion would be the second recommendation, as stated in the agenda.
So, I'll make a motion to way further reading and introduce ordinance 2023-005, Renewing the Carmel Restaurant Improvement District for a term of nine years and six months, beginning January 1, 2024, or as soon as possible thereafter, and ending on June 30, 2033.
I'll second.
Motion is second. Any other discussion? I don't see any. Okay. Nova, could we call a roll?
Councilmember Barron?
Yes.
Councilmember Darmoff?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferlito?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Richards?
Yes.
Mayor Potter?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. Thank you very much. Now, why don't we move on, then, to Resolution 2023-0666, adopting the fiscal year GAN appropriations limit. I'd be shocked if anybody's speaking at my 30th budget, and I'd never heard anybody speak GAN limits, but okay, let's go.
I'm only going to give a quick 30-minute presentation on the GAN limit. I promise.
Thirty seconds.
Everything you ever wanted to know about the GAN limit. But I am here, administrative, this is the first step that we need to do before we get into the budget, is to actually adopt the fiscal year 2324 appropriations limit. And so, what that is, in a nutshell, is that the state has placed a limit ceiling on spending by state, school districts, and local governments. It's a prescribed formula that comes out with this spending limit, and so, council from an administrative has to approve this. And the state gives us basically the formula and how we come up with the appropriations limit. Last year, it was $39 million, $39.2 million. This year, based on the factors for fiscal year 2324, the appropriations limit is $40,742,023. So, tonight, I come with the recommendation for the City Council to please confirm the selection of the annual adjustment factors, as provided by the State Department of Finance, and adopt the fiscal year appropriation limit, the 2324 appropriation limit, which is $40,742,203. Was that 30 seconds?
That was good. Recognizing that this is not the meat of the adoption of the budget, this is the procedural step we're going through. Is there anybody in the public which speak to this item tonight? My member recommended, he's intact. All right. Bring it back to council for direction. Council members? We need a resolution adopting fiscal year 202023, 2024 adoption limit. Also move.
Second.
Give a motion with a second. Nova, can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Barron?
Yes.
Councilmember Darmoff?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferlito?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Richards?
Yes.
Mayor Potter?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Right now, to the meat is the motion, the meat of the action tonight. So, we've got Adopt Resolution 2023-067, adopting fiscal year 2023-2024 annual operating and capital budget. Maxine, the floor is yours.
I'll get started while Nova brings up the presentation. But again, tonight, we are going to, I'm here recommending the fiscal year 202324 budget to you tonight, and how we got here, we've, this is a pretty substantial process that the city has gone through. We first came to council at the beginning of April to provide the presentation on the five-year CIP, along with the financial forecast. During the May 2, 2023 meeting, I also presented the recommended budget, the very in-depth recommended budget. Also, during the timeframe of May 2 through the 19th, the community, anybody was available could provide questions to us for us to respond to. Then, on May 16, we integrated those questions that we had received by May 11 into the workshop, and again, provided City Council, along with our community, a very in-depth review of our fiscal year recommended 2223 budget. So, with the information during all these meetings, the workshop, I am presenting to you the fiscal year 2324 for adoption. So, what changed between the workshop and today? Just very minor changes to some of the narratives. We added more details about the shoreline infrastructure repairs that you will see on page 58. We also updated our CIP table, the recommended capital projects and funding sources. Again, that came from our meeting during the workshop. We also have included additional questions 19 through 34, although a majority of those were incorporated into the workshop, but you do have the written and responses that were provided. Also, tonight, again, if there is more conversation about changing what we are proposing to you tonight, I want you to be aware that there is another opportunity, which is our mid-year, when we do come to council, to let you know how we've performed our first two quarters from a revenue standpoint, and also an expenditure standpoint. And then, that will also help that maybe I don't get in trouble with Councilmember Barron during mid-year to see how we, how we did our, came through with our estimates. So, again, this evening, our, this evening, our 2324 budget did not, was not modified based on the workshop that we had. We do, are recommending the revenues at $30 million coming in, $30.9 million. We have our 2324 recommended expenditures, which is about $40.8 million. And again, we are requesting the use of $9.9 million in our fund balance. Again, our staffing is at $96.23, which has not changed. Overall, for our $40.9 million budget, how I look at this and how we break it down into the four pillars, which is our employees, which covers our salaries and benefits, pension mitigation, unfunded liability, and workers' comp. $11.2 in our operating expenditures is that's what we're providing to the community, the services, and then $10.9 in our CIP, and then about $500,000 in debt. So, again, this budget, this year's budget, really reflects about $22.1 million invested back into the village. As I indicated, our staffing has not changed since last fiscal year. We are staying steady at $96.23 positions. The only thing that was modified that I brought up during our budget workshop was the way that we budget a couple of the positions. For those that are flexibly staffed, we are budgeting at the higher level. So, for example, when we have a maintenance worker one or two, that's a flexibly staffed position, we are budgeting it at a maintenance worker two. So, it allows two things, whether it's a promotional or career opportunity, or if we do have a vacancy, it does allow the city to look at operational need, whether we bring somebody in at a one or a two. So, that was the only minor change that we did in staffing. Again, revenues at a glance, the $30.9, what that consists of are property taxes, sales tax, Measure C, other charges for services, and our TOT, which comes in, again, about $30.9 million. Our expenditures at a glance, that consists of our salaries and benefits, outside services, other expenditures, pension, our CIP, our capital outlay, and our debt service is at about $40.8 million. But I do want to highlight, this does include our $2 million UAL payment, along with the $1 million Section 115 trust that we are putting away, and that was, again, something that council recommended last year for five years. This is our favorite dollar to show how we are spending our money by function, by department. As you'll see, our operating budget is close to $30 million, and that incorporates every department. So, administration, citywide, council, legal, planning, ambulance, fire, police, marketing, Sunset Center, library, community activities, and public works, that's about $30 million. And then, again, we have about $530,000 in debt, we have $10.9 in capital, that are capital outlay, and $76,000 in workers' comp. So, that's what brings us to just overall, our close to $40.9 million in expenditures. Again, this is our capital projects at a glance that we had a, we've had several discussions about. One thing that I did want to point out with a few of these CIPs this year that were approved by council, is that several of the CIP projects, drainage, staircases, reventment, seawalls, they include the actual design and construction in these CIPs. So, I just want to make sure that that is noted as part of the CIPs at a glance. And then, in closing, again, our projected fund balance for this fiscal year is about $30.9 million. And as I am requesting that we are going to be using about $9.9 to balance our budget, you'll see that our projected estimate of year-end balance, fund balance will be, take us down to about $21 million. So, that provides my very high overview fiscal 202324 operating and CIP budget, and we just are coming to you to have approved tonight's budget. But also, again, I just want to reiterate that there is another opportunity, I call during mid-year, where we will come back to council to provide kind of our estimates in revenues and our estimates in expenditures. That way, if there are things that come up between July 1 and December 31, for us to, for council to consider, that is another opportunity for council to make budget adjustments as well.
Thank you, Max. Appreciate it. Are there any questions to Maxine at this time by council members?
Mr. Mayor, just-
Mr. Mayor, just, I wanted to thank Max and Jane and the finance team, and then, you know, the council, you've heard this a lot, you had some great questions, you provided great guidance, thank you. And we did receive actually more questions than we've received in the last couple of years from the public, so I want to thank the public for really being active in this process, something we always encourage, but it's been a good budget year, so we're happy to answer any questions, Mr. Mayor.
Are there any questions before I go out to the public? I don't see any. Open it up to the public. Opportunity for any public member to comment on this item, but you don't be shy. No comments, no questions? All righty. Now would be the time. You got anything you wanted to try to hit us up for?
Oh, yeah. That's right. Thank you. I'm not sure I want to come out this late. Anyway, I just wanted to, I can jump, jump ahead a little, just want to give you a little bit of background because many of you haven't met me. I'm relatively new, obviously, to the chamber, and I've spent some time with some of you, but I'm still yet to spend some time with a few more of you. So, I've been part of leadership teams for Fortune 500 companies for the last twenty years, managing digital transformations and responsible for global teams around the world, growing business, businesses double-digit through digital retailing. So, that's kind of a general background of mine. If I could, oh, sorry, if I could just, thank you. So, yeah, that's kind of my background, working across digital retailing for the last fifteen years. I'm going to scoop across these pretty quickly because these are just statistics of the visitor's center today. Over the last year, we serviced about twenty thousand guests, but we're talking about taking the visitor's center out to the streets. And what we've noticed, two key points there, is we touch about fifty to eighty visitors more by going out to the streets than we do sitting behind the desk in the visitor's center. So, we see a significant opportunity to really lift the number of touchpoints between our knowledgeable volunteers and getting them into the restaurants and stores. Again, I'll leave this as a background reading for the, for the council, so I'll skip over that. And again, I'll just jump over this one, too. Get to the budget numbers. So, this was the budget that we presented a few weeks ago, about a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars it cost to run the visitor's center today, and the contribution last year was sixty thousand, five hundred from the city, which we greatly appreciated. That provided a deficit carried by the chamber of seventy-five thousand. One thing we want to do this year is really update the visitor's center. It's not really reflective of the city today. The, the space isn't well-planned, a lot of the materials were bought over from the visitor's center when it was over near Hogs Breath, and as a result, it's, it's not well-designed for visitors or for the volunteers. Again, some space planning that needs to be done here. So, this is what we want to do with about twenty-five thousand dollars of that money to really lift the profile of that visitor's center significantly, and really looking at additional hours to increase the number of volunteers, to really get those volunteers out into the streets to address what we previously spoke about. With the additional investment, that would still result in a fifty-five thousand dollar investment on behalf of the chamber. I'll leave these ones, too. This is a lot of the stuff that we're doing today. I know we're going to run out of time, so I just wanted to leave that for your background reading, but we continue to provide support for leadership. Our speaker series is coming back. In fact, we're just this week starting to prepare for next week, sorry, for next month. We're continuing to respond to complaints. We've seen a rise in racial complaints just over the last few months. We are in the process of setting up training for our local business owners to understand how to address these locally and potentially even maybe change some of their current behaviors to ensure that we can bring that back and to remove that from, from this town completely. So, we do that on a daily basis. Last week, we, we handled more than twenty-five calls on Friday alone, just from businesses and from guests in town. We carry with our signature events, Taste of Carmel, Awards of Excellence, and a number of other activities as we've talked about before. So, I'll leave those again for your, your background. We're partnering with Luxury Magazine for a editorial on the chamber, on the chamber here over the next back quarter. But I wanted to finish off with, with reiterating that the business, the, the chamber and the businesses thrive with the strong relationship between the business and the city, and that's what we want to push forward with. I'm looking forward to building those strong relationships with you all over the coming weeks. I've spent some time and looking forward to, looking forward to further updates as we go on through the year. I want to spend at least a quarterly update coming to you and giving you a detailed recount on how our finances are working, what we're doing in the city, how our, our current projects are going, and how they're adding value to the city. So, we want to continue to do that over the next few months.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Much appreciate it. Anybody else wishing to speak tonight?
Mayor Potter, city council members. My name is Doug Lumston. I'm the, I'm a resident of Carmel and the founder and owner of Monterey Mooters for the last twenty-four years, and I've had the great pleasure of showing off the incredible Monterey peninsula, including the most magical small town in the world, Carmel by the Sea, to tens of thousands of people throughout all these years. I was part of the group that invited the cruises to come to Monterey and helped develop tours that brought them into Carmel for shopping. After a twenty-four, as a twenty-four-year member of the Carmel Mission, one of the most exciting moments of my life is when I became the board chair of the Carmel Chamber in twenty-twelve. I worked hand-in-hand with the then-mayor of Carmel, Jason Burnett, to pass a higher sales tax for, for the city to increase revenue. The efforts of the chamber played a large role in that success. It also gave me, that experience gave me really a wonderful opportunity to learn how local government works and how to, how to peek behind the scenes of how our business world helps the residents and how the residents help our local business world. But most of all, it taught me how important it is to have a strong chamber of commerce in a world-class little city. We all went through the dark days of the pandemic, our city has risen again, and the business economics are returning to pre-COVID levels. But when people, when people are looking for information about Carmel, we have all this amazing energy of marketing going out, you know, to the world. When people are, when they come here, they come to the chamber, that's where they get the help. Someone has to help all these people coming into town after we do all this digital marketing, whatever it might be. If it's on, if it's on a particular weekend that we're going to have some events, or if it's just the regular, normal digital market that they run a lot. When they come into town, and we're having a lot of people coming in our town, a lot of families, who are they going to talk to? They're not going to call, really, I don't think, the city or Carmel. You're not set up to answer questions like that. Visit Carmel doesn't have a phone line, really, to, to answer or to help these people. It's, it's the chamber. It's the chamber that that's their responsibility, and we take it on, and I think we do a great job of it. Recently, we just started a ambassador program, which is putting people on the street, volunteers on the street. They have an identifiable vest on, people can come to them, ask questions, and a lot of questions are asked all the time. A lot of people, of course, call us when they're coming here for a trip, they'll inquire about the business environment. We talk about that, how things are going, what they're thinking about bringing their own business here, they'll ask about, hey, are there ice cream shops or whatever? That's the Carmel Chamber. We, we handle all of that, and we send them to the people if they need more information about this. We'll try to get them to the right person, send them, send them a business packet or something, and, and even meet with them if they come, try to set up a meeting and stuff. We do all of these things that I think a lot of people are not aware of what the Carmel Chamber does. And I really, I really encourage all of our city council people, if you really even haven't been to the chamber, go up and see where it's at. Visit our little, our little visitor's center, which, which needs some help right now. We need some help funding-wise on that.
Thank you.
And, okay, I kind of went off the whole thing. Is that it?
That's it, three minutes.
Okay.
Looks like everybody else.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Maria Weidman. I'm a resident of Carmel. I've lived here since twenty-seventeen as a, as a part-time resident and since twenty-nineteen as a full-time resident. I came to my love of Carmel by, thirty-eight years ago, actually. My husband was stationed at Fort Ord, he was the second lieutenant. We were young and foolish and fell in love with this place. Today, I'm a very proud supporter and volunteer at the visitor's center. And I come to you today because I just want to share with you my experience there. I've always loved this area, and I love being able to say, this is my home. And when somebody comes in and says to me, what do you love about this place? What should we do? I love being able to offer so many different opportunities, whether it's just walking down the beach when you only have an hour because you've come in on a, a tour bus that is just giving us short shrift, or if you're here for two or three days and I can say to you, walk around town. The best part of Carmel is walking around the neighborhood. I give a map, I say there are little courtyards, here's a little walking tour that you can give yourself on the history of Carmel. And those things make it special, not just for me, but I'm hoping for the individuals who come here because they want to see a unique place. I think Carmel is very different from the places you can visit in the United States. I, I've lived in a lot of places here, I've lived in New York, I've lived in Cleveland, Ohio, I've lived in Los Angeles and Palo Alto, and we've always come back here because there's a certain charm for Carmel. And to be able to share that with the guests that visit us and also with other residents who come in and they say, you know, I don't know what's going on in the area right now. What, what's new? Are there new restaurants? Are there new places to stay? Are there new places to visit? Again, it, it's helpful to me as a, as a resident here to be able to share that information. And again, I'm sharing the joy that I have. And so, as a volunteer, I just want to say, I hope you support the chamber and the visitor's center. It brings a lot of joy, I think, to people in the area and also to the people who come and visit us. It's, it's a great place, and it would be nice for it to be a little nicer and, and reflect the city. And again, that's my two, two bits of information, and I hope that helps you tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Maria. Appreciate it.
Hi, David O'Neill again. Just really quick, I've been volunteering with the Chamber of Commerce, and it's been a great education for me. The, the merchants and stuff like that really use the chamber to communicate and understand what the residents are wanting in the communities and what they're doing there. And in a lot of other communities, visitor centers are paid for directly by the community. So, I think that helping them financially is not overly, it's not too much to ask. Thanks.
Thank you, David. Next speaker.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name's Ashley Stoddard. I am a, a business, business owner and also a resident here, here in Carmel by the Sea. I have sat on the board of the Carmel Chamber of Commerce for five years now, and I have been lucky to sit on many committees. The Carmel Chamber of Commerce not only takes care of visitors when they come to town and, and teach them how, how we live in this town and what, what makes this place special, but we also do leadership programs, Leadership Carmel. We're, we're, we're continuing to empower and raise leaders from, from the high school to community members, and then, and, and that's a ripple effect of things like the Hearts of Carmel, which is public art, which this year, we're doing the Dogs of Carmel, which involves our community and it involves our art community, our business community, our residents, everybody. I also have been able to sit on Government Affairs Committee. We have many committees within the chamber. The chamber is a viable part of this community, and I hope that you consider our ask. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ashley. Appreciate it.
I'm John Ruskel. I'm the current president of the Board of Directors at the Carmel Youth Center. My purpose here tonight is to briefly, very briefly, give you an overview of what the youth center is up to, where we're going in the hopes of gaining some financial support from the city. As the Carmel Youth Center looks forward to moving in the new direction, the Board of Directors wants to update the Carmel City Council on some of our recent activities. We have selected a new executive director to lead our center to new tomorrows. We are actively recruiting a new childcare director who will submit an application to the state of California for a childcare license. Our intent is bringing well-qualified and credentials, credential personnel into the CYC family and to attain our goal of enrichment and service to the youth of our Carmel community. In addition, we have spent a considerable amount of time working to articulate and prioritize the needed physical upgrades to our building. Our intent is not only to remain compliant with governing codes, but also to improve the experience within, with inside our wonderful facility. The CYC has served the Carmel city, city of Carmel by meeting regional needs. We recognize that supporting families who work in our community supports our community's revenue. A little earlier in the meeting, Mayor Potter mentioned the business of a return on investment. So, part of what I'm trying to get across here is that supporting the youth center does provide a return on investment. The CYC has provided tuition assistance through scholarship, scholarships, and supported children in our community who have parents who work here and the youth who live in our community. In addition to childcare, the CYC hosts, hosts many events for our village, like the library book sale, which is coming up in July, community garden cleanup, a visit with Santa, Carmel High School reunions, a volunteer center for Concorde Elegance, and the AT&amp;T, blood drives, forest theater rehearsals, drivers' education, and a city emergency center, just to name a few. So, we have a lot of functions that aren't just concerned with childcare. The CYC has been working with the Carmel Residents Association to host events and partner children in our village with CRA members to support CAR, Beach Cleanup, Beach Cleanups. We have seen our village, we have, we have seen in our village strong support for events that bring our Carmel residents together with other locals like the Grand Pals Program. As a board, it is our considered point of view that the need can be expressed in two main areas. We would be looking to the city to grant the, to grant the Carmel Youth Center fifty-thousand dollars this year to aid us in the trend.
I'm sorry, what'd you say? I'm going to drive out of time.
Okay.
You summarized briefly.
Summarized briefly. The group of people, which is many of whom are here tonight with me, the dedication that we've been working towards this goal is phenomenal. We're, we're not going to fail. We're absolutely going to make it, and if I could leave you with one thought, that's it. The Carmel Youth Center is viable, we will be going forward, it's just taking a while. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Anybody else wishing to speak tonight?
As a, as a resident, a mother, an engaged community member, I would love to see us as committed to our next generation of community members and leaders. I have seen in the time that I have been on the board at CYC that there's been some challenges for us, and we do want you to know we have a committed board that is going forward to reimagine the youth center for the next seventy-five years and to provide the programs and the support to nurture them to be healthy, relevant community members. So, I hope you consider that in your decision this evening.
Thank you. Could we get your name for the record?
Pam Nyman.
Thank you, Pam. Appreciate that. Anybody else wishing to speak tonight?
Thank you, mayor and city council. Segal Lomas, board chair for the Carmel Chamber of Commerce. You've seen me, you've heard me many times before, I'm going to make this really quick and simple. I want to talk to you about the strength of the volunteers and the leadership that we have at the Carmel Chamber of Commerce. Lance, who is our new executive director, the budgets that he has been responsible for are eighty to eight-hundred million dollars a year. The companies are fourteen-billion-dollar annual companies. The internet sales that he directly was responsible for, he took the internet sales from three-hundred million to three-billion. This was for Macy's. He was the lead person on this. I have all the faith in this man and where he is going to take us, the foundation that he is laying for us, I am in awe. He is going to blow our socks off. He is going to blow our socks off. We ask for your help now. I want to also speak to the volunteers that work in our Visitor Center. They're not your normal, average volunteer person. We have marketing and sales professionals. We have folks from the American Red Cross, cross-training of executives. We have, um, let's see, let me just look at this. Professionals with NASDAQ. We have, um, folks that have worked with, on IPOs. We have world-renowned graphic designers. We have, um, a minister with the Church of the Wayfarer. Um, these people, they're, they're, they're strong, intelligent, passionate people that love our community. And, um, I'm in awe at these, everyone, the Board members, the ambassadors and the volunteers, but the volunteers and what they bring to our business community in helping drive the spend um, of the visitors when they are visiting and making their experience rich so that they will return. I thank you for your time and I hope you will consider giving us our full ask. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Is there anybody else wishing to speak tonight? Okay, I'm going to say no. Okay, is there anybody in Zoom world?
There's no one with their hands raised.
All right, it concludes the public comment period. Bring it back to Council. Council, questions, comments, direction?
I do have a question. Um, the gentleman from CYC, if I could just ask him a question.
Sure.
I was wondering if you could tell us, um, the kids that attend the Youth Center, how many of them are actually from the 93921 Carmel Bay to Sea?
Within our one square a mile?
Yes.
I would say, um, 30%. I don't know that, I can't say that that's, uh, we don't break it down that way. We are a regional center for sure. Koshawa, Carmel Valley, Big Sur, Pebble Beach, Greater Carmel, which of course is very close to where we're standing tonight. So, you know, we, uh, we, we serve regionally. But Carmel would of course be included in that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments by Councilmembers? All right, well, I guess I'll speak. Um, you know, I think I'm, uh, very impressed with the budget that we've processed, we've been through this year. It's been very thoughtful. It's been very deliberative. I'm glad to see that we're going ahead and upping the recruitment and retention efforts by paying appropriate scale. I think that makes a big difference for when we go ahead and try to retain our workers. And we want to keep the best and not be a training ground for other cities, which we were for a while. Um, as far as the requests by these other agencies, I do think that there's, uh, consideration that we should take into, into the first quarter of this year. I'd rather see us wait till the second period for the mid-year budget review. Um, for the Youth Center, I'm very sympathetic, but I don't want to know, I don't want to fund it right now. I want to know what it's going to look like. I would like to see some other commitments. I'm a little disappointed to hear that the Chamber is at odds with some of the other destination marketing. I hope that's not the case. I don't want to see us fighting. I don't want to hear that at all. So I'm hoping that we can partner up a little bit more with the rest of, with the, we, same mission we have here is together. So any other comments or questions?
No, I'll go. I think we do have a pretty extended budget right now. And I, while I'm supportive of all three, the speakers that came up today, CYC, uh, um, the Chamber and Visit Carmel. I would like to see us maybe get through this first six months and see how we end up before we, um, commit to spending anything else at this point. So that's where I feel, I just, I think we're pretty much stretched right now.
Other comments?
Yes, I agree. Thank you all for coming. Um, I'm, you know, I would especially be interested in seeing what the Youth Center does and revisiting that issue, um, at the beginning of the year. Um, I'll make a motion if.
Okay. Any other comments?
I, I support all of you, what you just said.
I'll, I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 202367, adopting the fiscal year 2023, 2024 annual operating and capital budget.
The motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, okay, we have a motion, a second. Nova, can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Barron?
Yes.
Councilmember Jarmov?
No.
Councilmember Furleto?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Richards?
Yes.
Mayor Potter?
Aye.
Motion carried.
All righty. Um, we'll go ahead and then move on to the final item that's before us tonight. That's the permanent encroachment permit for a existing fence in the public right-of-way on the south side of a single-family residence in the northeast corner of Huniporo Avenue and Eighth and a residential and limited commercial zone. Do we have a presentation by staff? Marnie? Marnie, you going to do this?
All right. Well, good evening. Uh, so before the Council, um, tonight is an encroachment permit application. Um, by way of a little bit of background, back in 2003, the Planning Commission approved, uh, two single-family dwellings at the corner of Huniporo and Eighth Avenue. Uh, the home on the corner was constructed um, and the, the second home on the lot next door, uh, was not. So that lot remained vacant. Also in, in February of 2003, with the original approval, uh, the Planning Commission included a condition on the project that a sidewalk be constructed on the north side of Eighth Avenue. In October of 2003, uh, the Planning Commission amended that condition, um, to allow the sidewalk to be relocated to the south side of Eighth Avenue um, and be more like a pathway. Uh, the south side is the R1 district. Uh, and so a more natural-looking pathway, uh, is consistent with that character. In, uh, March of 2005, uh, the applicant submitted a building permit revision, um, to construct a fence, uh, which is what the Council's looking at this evening, um, in the public right-of-way. Um, this building permit revision was approved, uh, by staff, both the Planning Department, um, and Forestry, uh, subject to the issuance of an encroachment permit. Uh, the owner at the time, uh, did submit, um, uh, an agreement for that permit. Um, however, that agreement was never executed, um, nor was it filed. And then in February of 2023, so this year, um, the Planning Commission approved, uh, development for the vacant lot next door, um, which is a mixed-use building with office and residential above. Uh, so that's just a little bit of background on the, the history of the development, um, regarding these two sites. Um, according to the municipal code, the city administrator has the authority to act on an encroachment permit application um, or refer the application to the Council for decision. Um, just due to the unique nature of the application as well as the amount of public interest, uh, the city administrator has referred this to the Council. Um, and you have seen it a couple times, um, before. So your, uh, decision on this application is final. Um, what guides you in reviewing the application is in Section 12.08060, uh, which includes the standards for, uh, encroachments in the public right-of-way. This is also included as an attachment to the staff report. Uh, you are not required by the code to adopt a resolution and you can simply, uh, take action with a motion and a majority vote. Um, so approval of the application uh, would allow the existing, uh, grape stake fence to remain in the current location. Uh, it could be repaired or replaced and kind over time. Um, should the Council choose to issue the encroachment permit, um, you can also terminate, um, the agreement at any time if it's in the best interest of the city or if it's necessary for public health, safety and welfare. The Council also has the option of denying the encroachment permit uh, and this would require, uh, that the fence be removed, uh, from the public right-of-way. Uh, so the recommendation this evening is to consider the application, um, whether to approve the fence that is currently located in the right-of-way um, and take action to either approve or deny the request. And that concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions.
Any questions, Marnie, at this time by Councilmembers? Seeing none. Is there a representative of the owner here or the owner himself?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the Council. Anthony Lombardo on behalf of.
Mr. Lombardo, how long do you need for your presentation?
I think five minutes probably.
You want to save some time for rebuttal?
Sure.
Okay, so four minutes. We'll set the clock for four and then we'll go one minute for rebuttal. Is that enough?
While she's getting the PowerPoint. I'm going to try and be brief because I think we all know a lot about this application. The. Yeah, is that one? Okay. As you recall, the Council voted to, uh, rehear this again after your last vote. And in the intervening time, uh, we've produced more information and found more evidence that I can, I think is a, a preponderance that there was an encroachment permit issued for this property by the city, which mysteriously has disappeared from the city's records after 2014. Um, as you can see from the first illustration, uh, the home is built on the property line, as Marnie mentioned earlier. Uh, it was approved with an encroachment permit to build in a little grape stake fence in the yellow area highlighted there, which is about six to eight feet above the street elevation. Here is the encroachment area, which is unusable for anyone by, for anything as both the Planning Commission found, uh, when it voted to relocate the sidewalk. This, this, these are the minutes where it says, "The Public Works Department, the Police Chief, the Building Official and the Forester all said that the north side of the street was unusable for anything." Paraphrasing, in fact, Mr. Herrera has, on more than one occasion, reiterated that it would not be possible to build an ADA-compliant sidewalk at the elevation of the Fountain's home. The Planning Commission, as Marnie mentioned, mandated that the property owner build a pathway. Her picture was better than mine, on the south side of Eighth, which the property owner paid for and built. Uh, you can see in this photo, the north side and how inappropriate that would be for any improvements. Uh, now here's some of the evidence we have that an encroachment permit was issued. These are the building plans. And in the corner, you see a red stamp there. That's a stamp of the building official of the approval of landscape and encroachment revisions. The, that is the approval on April 1st of 2005 by the city of the encroachment. That can only happen after the encroachment permit was issued. Here is the application, which was in your staff report by, by Mr. Silvery, who is a contractor for the house, for the encroachment, which is set forth in the lower left-hand corner, which I presume is what resulted in the approval. Uh, we also have in the record, uh, the Hold Harmless Agreement, which was signed by the then-property owner as required by and only for an encroachment permit and delivered to the city in 2005. And then in 2006, Mr. Mackey provides evidence that he is providing insurance coverage for the city pursuant to the encroachment permit. There's only one reason someone would go through all those things and there's only one reason the city would approve the plans is because an encroachment permit was granted. So I think, as I said, the preponderance of the evidence is that there is an encroachment permit, which has, or was mysteriously removed from the city's files. Staff requested that we apply for this as a replacement encroachment permit to the one that was previously approved and that's why we're here. At one of our prior hearings, the Council heard, uh, more than once that there were certain standards that had to be met in order to approve an encroachment permit that in fact is not a correct description of what the code requires. Here's an excerpt. There are standards, which obviously the code found, the, the city found were met, but if they're not met, the City Council has to consider the approval. There is no, there is no limitation on your authority to do so. Uh, thank you. I'll save the rest of my time for rebuttal. Thank you.
Any questions, the staff or?
Yes, I have a question. Is this a de novo hearing?
Yes, it's a, it's a brand-new application, so yes. It's over again. It's not, it's not over again. This is a brand-new encroachment permit application. So I guess it's new, yes.
So in a de novo hearing, you do not have to consider anything that went before? Is that correct?
Well, this is an application that again, as Mr. Lombardo just said, we, we, we did not, because of the history and the murkiness of the history, we did not feel, I did not feel comfortable approving this administratively at my level. And because of this being called back by the Council previously, uh, we thought it in the best interests of the community to have the City Council review this, ma'am.
I have a second question. Um, I thought the staff report originally said something that they felt that landscaping could achieve the same, uh, privacy issue as the fence. And I don't see that in the PowerPoint.
In one of the previous, um, in fact, Mr. Lombardo was working with his client, um, uh, on a solution set where we'd put a very small sign, you know, like the size of a index card, a three-by-five card that directed people to the south side of Eighth to use the sidewalk over there because of how unsafe it would be to travel within the roadway surface on the north side, uh, you know, moving west, e- east to west. Um, and, um, we thought, and Mr. Lombardo again was working with his client on a, a landscape solution, but that is not their proposal tonight, ma'am. They propose to keep the fence, um, as it's, as it's historically been, with or without an encroachment permit.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Okay, is there anybody in the public?
I have a, I'm, I'm sorry. Um, uh, could you go back a couple of slides, Mr. Lombardo? Uh, another one, another one, another one. That one. No, yellow one.
Oh, sorry.
What does this mean? Uh, you know, I'm, I'm sorry to put you on the spot. Um, what does this mean? Public Works approve, disapprove? 32805 on the left corner.
So, so this is, this is, so this means that a, a building permit, um, is, is poised to be issued with some additional, either conditions for the applicant to meet or conditions for the, the different staff departments to approve. And so what, what, uh, Mr. Maroni, this is Tim Maroni, the TM, which is by up there, Tim Maroni, who was our building official at that point in time, um, required that a landscape plan and revision to sheet A1.1 be provided and that an encroachment permit plus tree protection would have to be in place prior to issuance of a building permit, sir.
Okay, so this is not, so this is not, that approve, disapprove means that the tree protection is in place or whatever it is. That's not an approve, disapprove on the issuance of the encroachment permit? Like the person that's, the person that circled the word approve there on the left and initialed SR or SL, whatever that is, that is not, that was not, could not be interpreted as a marker that the city has issued the encroachment permit? That's my quest, that's basically my question.
I, it's difficult for me to make a representation that it's an R.C., which would be Rob Culver, uh, and then Mike Branson, who was our city forester to the right. I, I, I can't say definitively, sir, what, what that was approving, whether it was approving the plans or whether it was approving a, a, an encroachment permit at that point in time, sir. I, I don't know.
But it does speak to the picket fence on this.
Yes, sir. Mm-hmm.
Say that, what was that comment?
Does speak to the picket fence if you look at the work described down the lower left-hand corner.
Yeah, so this is a planned check revision. So this, what this means to me is that, that the picket fence was added and that Mr. Maroni was requiring the picket fence to be included on the plans for posterity.
Hey, Jeff?
I'm, I'm processing what he said. I'm, I'm okay.
Yeah. All right, so opening up a public comment then? Are we comfortable with my going to the public? Okay. Is there anybody in the public wishing to speak tonight? Do come forward.
I'm going to pass out something real quick. I'm not going to waste your shopping or do. Uh-oh. I didn't mean to give it to the lawyer. I apologize. I didn't think I was copying for everything. Sorry.
Looks like you did.
There's enough.
Did I get, oh, maybe I gave you my.
Does the applicant send this?
You can have Brian's.
Yeah.
I just wanted to thank the staff, again, night of staff thank-yous, for being so clear in this presentation about the separation of the fence issue from the path issue. As you've heard today, 2003 was the year of the lot line adjustment, the path decision-making, whether it's on the south side, north side, or south side, and the approval of a landscape plan, which is what's in your possession there, the drawing. That landscape plan was, and this is, this is a full two years before anyone mentioned anything about a fence. So thank you, the staff, for making that super clear. There has never been an association with a fence and the path. The path was an obligation that came with the approval of this project, and was eventually Karen, I believe is correct in that because no existing encroachment permit, even if it existed, is permitted by law to create a precedent for considering an encroachment permit, this is, in fact, de novo consideration. And because it's a de novo consideration, I think you do need to look at the 15-ish requirements that are on this thing that is part of your packet. I just printed it out because I think it's really important. And I circled and read the things that, out of the 15, just the 10 or 11 that sprung to mind that are clearly not met by this encroachment permit application, which must require the encroachment to be in the public interest, cannot be for a private interest. It also has hazard issues, things like that. We're talking about how hazardous it is to scooch around the thing that's there now, as children are wont to do, as they go to the scout house, or to the, eventually to the scout house, or to the dance areas, et cetera. You cannot reduce the visible, the visual pleasure of the green belt for the community. There's all sorts of things. So I just circled the ones, just so they're right printed out in front of you, I know we all have a tendency to just look at the screen all day. And then I just wanted to highlight for you all that the landscape plan that was approved in 2003, once the path issue, the path was moved, as, as the staff accurately said, from the north to the south, this is the landscape plan that Councilmember Richards and I, and others stood in front of the house and thought, wouldn't it have been nice if they just did the landscape plan that was approved? And in fact, as it was alluded to earlier, Mr. Lombardo and I, and on behalf of his client, tried to re-propose that they just do the original approved plan with fencing for safety if necessary, but at the correct location at the property line, and that's what you'll see on the flip side of the approved, the 2003. And I, I understand from tonight and from earlier conversations that that, you know, is not, has not been accepted by the client. I'm sure Mr. Lombardo can represent that more accurately, but I, I regret that it hasn't been accepted, because it was the original deal. And I believe also that Mr. Ririg has accurately represented that this, and Councilmember Barron, that this yellow ticket is part of a long process of getting one toward an encroachment permit application, not any final say. It is a particular department checking off that, should it go forward, it's okay with our department. So thank you very much for looking at the facts of this matter.
Senator Yancey, Steve Bannon. You have a minute or so to rebut.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Public benefit, as the previous speaker described, public got a path built at the private property owner's expense, and the private property owner has maintained the landscaping that was approved with the encroachment permit. In answer to, I think, further answer to Councilmember Barron's question, the yellow sheet is the plan revision that was submitted by the contractor. The other sheet that I showed you is the approval of that plan, and in order to get a final permit to move into your house, you have to have the approvals, and so in order for this, the, the, the plans have to be signed off. In order to sign off those plans, you have to have had an encroachment permit. Why would Mr. Mackey have submitted an encroachment, I mean, a hold harmless agreement and a proof of insurance if he didn't have an encroachment permit? It makes no sense. As I mentioned in my correspondence from a few days ago, these 10 or 11 standards are not the requirements for issuance of an encroachment permit. The Fountains have a young child, they want to keep the little grape steak fence, and if the council believes that should be landscaped in, outside of it, in the city right-of-way to screen it further, they're more than happy to do that. On behalf of the Fountains, I'd like to thank the council for its consideration, and its, hopefully, confirmation of the encroachment permit that Mr. Mackey got, that the Fountains have relied on, that their little, their young child is protected by, and for which a path, a safe public path, was built on the south side of the street. I believe the Fountains have a vested right to this permit, and you can't simply pull a rug out of some, from under someone because someone thinks it would be better to have a sidewalk next to their home, because a proposal to eliminate any separation between the public and the front door of their, the front living room window is not acceptable to them. Thank you.
Thank you. You'll bring back the council for deliberation. Council members, your time.
I have another question.
Sure.
This one from Marnie. When was the fence actually built?
I can't say that with any certainty.
So this documentation that Mr. Lombardo priv, provided, this is the, like, this is documentation regarding the certificate of occupancy that was issued in April of, uh-
2005.
April of '05?
Yeah.
2005.
So the next slide, which is that, so in order to get the CO, he had to submit, the, the city gave him a CO as long as he submitted those revised plans?
Correct. Yeah, that was a plan, that was a plan revision to get the certificate of occupancy.
And so he submitted the certificate of occup, he submitted the revised plans, and then the city gave him the CO?
Presumably.
Presum, well, we, he has a CO, right?
Yeah, yeah, they have occupancy on the house, yes.
That was, really wasn't my question. There's a CO somewhere?
Yeah.
Do you have to get one? Like, I got one.
Yeah, absolutely. So the, the, yeah, the inspector would have finalized the project when it was done.
And he, they would have moved in. Mr. Mackey would have moved in, in 2005, after he submitted these revised plans, he stamped it and said, here's your CO.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're making some assumptions, because we're-
Okay.
Just kind of using the information that we have on file. I mean, we know that they submitted a plan for the fence, we know that the city reviewed it, we know that planning and forestry said, yep, it's fine, but they need to get an encroachment permit. And then there's really, there, there isn't any evidence that it was ever fully carried through. I agree with Mr. Lombardo, the agreement was submitted, like, all of that information was there, it just wasn't recorded at the county and completed.
And so the problem I'm having with all this is that all these things can be true at the same time. Right? You know, Mr. Lombardo makes a point that his client seemed to have submitted this documentation, and, you know, sort of acted in good faith, submitted the documentation with, with the fence on it, and got, you know, got that yellow piece of paper with, you know, indicating that he revised his documents, and then he got CO. And, and Victoria Beach says that, Victoria Beach says that the encroachment permit is illegal. Like, those two things, like, we shouldn't have issued those, we should not have issued the encroachment permit. You know, we should not have done a particular thing. And the reason I called it back, and, you know, I'm okay saying this right, the reason I called it back was, you know, at the last hearing, Mr. Lombardo made, you know, protested that the city had issued the permit, and there wasn't really any documentation for, like, we went through, I went through a lot with you over the course of the first, you know, 10 days, and the course of the next 10 days, to try and figure out whether somewhere in the bowels of City Hall, there was this piece of paper that, and we, we couldn't find it. Like, we just couldn't, we just, you know, we couldn't find it. Like, we really hunted around for it. And now, at this hearing, like, this, you know, while this is not perfect, while this documentation that Mr. Lombardo has provided is not perfect, like, it doesn't say, you know, it indicates to me that the city made a mistake. Like, the city, you know, the city, you know, I, you know, as I said at the very first hearing when we saw this, you know, it fails the test. Like, Victoria's right, it doesn't, it doesn't meet the test. You know, but we all make mistakes, we all, you know, and for me, the reputation of the city is really, really important. And that's why earlier, when we were talking about, you know, to go back to an earlier hearing, when we were talking about the green waste, you know, the green waste, the green waste contract, the, the city signed a contract. We need to live up to, we need to do what we said we were going to do, and I don't like it. You know, I don't like that our garbage rates go up every year, but, you know, this is the contract we signed, and maybe in 2030 we'll sign a better one, and it won't do that. But that means something to me. You know, the word of the city is really, really important to me, that we, that we stand by what we do. And, and I don't, you know, I'm, you know, here's, like, this gets me a lot closer to that line, to, you know, did the city issue a permit, or give him reason to, give, give Mr. Mackey reason to believe he had the permit? And this documentation, that yellow piece of paper, which was given to him after he submitted a revised, you know, the city wasn't, the city was in possession of evidence that he had constructed this fence. And, and in 2005, the city could have taken action. You know, Sue McLeod's counsel, right, she was mayor then, right? Sue McLeod's counsel could have taken this action to, to, to have this hearing back then. Like, this hearing that should have been, that should have done 16 years ago, but they didn't. You know, and so we've kind of lived with this thing, lived with this thing, lived with this thing forever, and I'm, you know, frankly, you know, I, I now believe that, you know, I'm now more on the side, you know, that this was the city's fault, and so I would, I would vote to give him the encroachment permit.
Second, under discussion.
So, so we, we have a motion by Mr. Barron? The, the mayor's seconded.
We can have this discussion under the motion.
Yeah.
Don't do anything.
I didn't say I would make-
Oh, okay.
I was, I was, that was my question, sorry, sir.
Okay. All right, well, Karen, you've got a comment.
Before I-
Karen.
100%.
Do encroachments need to be, what's the word, taken over to the county and recorded?
Yes.
And there was no recording of the encroachment at the county. That has been looked up. So if there was no encroachment recorded, there is no encroachment allowed. He skipped several steps. Mr. Mackey made mistakes. He built a house in the, legally, but right on the property line, and now he wants the city to give up its land to provide him some room. There is no encroachment permit existing, and this is de novo, and would we do it if none of this had happened in the past? Would we give away that city land? That is an important property right that belongs to the city. And the same thing can be accomplished with landscaping, which was in one of the earlier staff reports, that land, that the city said landscaping could accomplish the same thing for privacy.
It's, it's in this staff report as well.
Okay. So I would like to make a motion to deny the encroachment permit, and if the city can help them landscape it properly, so there is privacy.
Motion, is there a second? I don't hear why the motion fails.
I would, I would, I would make another comment, if I may, that, you know, this, this standard, and I, I didn't, I didn't look at this for this, for this meeting, but last time, you know, the city does have a standard encroachment agreement, right?
Yes, sir.
There's an encroachment agreement.
Yes, sir.
And the encroachment agreement itself says that with a valid reason, the city can revoke the encroachment, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All right, well, we had a motion, it failed. Can we get a motion under?
I'll make a motion, I, I, because I, I'm going to err on the side of safety. I think it's a dangerous hill, I think that the hill's in jeopardy of kind of continuing to dilapidate unless we landscape it. So for me, I would like to have a promise that there's going to be some landscaping done on that hill, and then I would move to approve the encroachment.
If you get a second, sir, I'll make a suggestion regarding a condition.
I'll second it, I'll second it.
I'd like to hear the condition.
And what about the fence? I, I'd like to see the fence remain.
Sorry?
I'd like to see the fence remain.
That's, that's the motion, ma'am.
Okay.
So you would, you would condition the approval, Mr. Richards, on, on landscaping on the south side of the fence, you know, native, drought-tolerant landscaping to be maintained by the adjacent private property owner?
Yes.
Could I make a comment? Would there be then a requirement that a landscaping plan, plan be submitted, and that be subject to approval of the city, or are you leaving it to their discretion?
You, you could do that. A little landscaping plan for the corner? Mr. Lombardo?
Let's get it all codified, anyway, yeah.
Mr. Lombardo's going north and south as well, so.
Would anyone entertain moving the fence in closer to the house? It's out there quite a ways, and it, it actually is dangerous, the way it is, with the stepping stones there. And it's over to the point where someone who wanted to walk on the public right-of-way is going to fall off the hill now. And I have walked on that property before, in the past, and there was enough flat area on the south side of the fence to do that. Now, there isn't.
Okay, I understand that you've walked on that, I've walked on it too. The problem is, where does it drop you off? It drops you off in the middle of Eighth Street. That's where it drops you off?
No.
It doesn't take you, it takes you right to the middle of Eighth Street.
The house is going to be there.
So, so that's my motion, I, I, I don't want to move the fence anymore. I want the fence to remain, I want landscaping, a landscaping plan, and that's my motion.
So the motion's to approve-
The second supports that.
Yes, so we have a motion by Richards, seconded by Potter, to approve the encroachment permit with the condition of submittal of, submittal and approval of a landscape plan, and then the adjacent private property owner's obligation to, to maintain that landscaping once installed.
Exactly. Yeah, we need any more clarification on the motion? Does staff have the motion, Marnie?
Okay. I would only mention that there would need to be the other requirement of the hold harmless agreement to be completed, so whatever city requirements that would apply to an encroachment permit would need to be in effect, including insurance.
Yes, please add that.
We already have the insurance, right? Saw that.
Forever.
The insurance needs to be paid yearly. Does anyone check on that?
All righty, we got a motion, we got a second. Can we get a roll call, please, Marnie?
Councilmember Barron?
Yes.
Councilmember Drumoff?
Yes.
Councilmember Furleto?
No.
Mayor Protem Richards?
Yes.
Mayor Potter?
Aye.
Motion carries 4-1.
All right, that completes our work for tonight. If there's any future gen items, we can consider those at a future date.
I got like 13 more minutes of conversation.
No, 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 nothing, I get the over-under on 9:30, and I made it. Okay.
You gave yourself away.
Thank you, council, for hard work tonight, I mean it.
You should have, you should have said something before the meeting, Joe. I'm sure we could have found 13 minutes.